City Council to order at six o'clock PM. We will now move on to the work session. This portion of the meeting is for discussion only. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, no formal action or vote will be taken and any item during this work session. Ms. Angelina, I will turn it over to you.
Discuss and receive the presentation on the city's responsibility to maintain right of ways, including manholes.
Good evening, Mayor. I have printed out a packet that y'all should each have in your packet in front of you on the dais. It goes over the mowing map with some specifics inside the city, like on Pleasant Run. It shows you where we're mowing at. There's also one on South Good where we mow at. And maintain. There's three pages there. If you have any questions.
You can't leave. I didn't think so. I'm sorry. Me too. Y'all can give these back to me after the meeting. Thank you. Now, sir, please continue.
Like I said, there's three pages I printed off. It's specific to Pleasant Run and South Good Road. There's some of the areas. Just a little bit of background information, just so y'all are aware. So typically, the way we do with our maintenance for our maintenance, what we typically like to do essentially is start in at the north side of town and work our way all the way down to south. That way, we're working our way this way when we get to the south end, then we'll go back up. Now, that could potentially change if we get a complaint, if there's, for say, like an open manhole or something that we need to go check out. The other thing, manhole inspections are done when the manholes are opened up. So if, you know, we started, thanks to council, we got a sewer crew in October, so that's kind of when we started our more in-depth preventative maintenance. So when we started all the way at the beginning of town, we're dragging our sewer. And that's, like I said, there's, we have a whole notebook full of manhole inspections. We may not have been to every manhole yet. There's, I think, I think the last time I looked at our book, there was like four hundred and sixty something manholes. So we haven't got to have one of them yet, but we do manhole inspections with, every time that we open a manhole, the sewer crew opens a manhole, there's an inspection paperwork filled out. And that's just a little bit of information, you know, I'd like to share with y'all. And if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Council, do you have any questions?
What did the numbers on the map represent? Twenty-eight, twenty-nine?
So I have a, I have a key that goes to that, and it has the words. So what we have is a map. This actually essentially is a map book. So we print it off, and it's like basically taking your whole big map and cutting it down into sections. That way, the guys can put that on the truck. That if they like, hey, why are we supposed to be mowing this and don't remember, look at the map book, okay, hey, we're not supposed to mow that. It's not in the map book. It's not in the green. But that's why it has the E3. Like I said, it's a map book.
Well, Blackwell Sunrise, there's twenty-eight, twenty-nine on West Horn. It's eighteen, Pleasant Run, excuse me, eighteen, twenty-two.
That, that all goes to the map key?
The map key.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Please speak up. These places that you've marked in green, these are the places that the city mows regularly?
So there are some, we have noticed that there are some that we have to, but this is, yes, this is regularly mowing, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry?
This is regularly mowing, yes, ma'am. And there are some places, like I know on F6, it shows both sides of Beltline, which we don't mow entirely, both sides in that area. The HOA was mowing that, and then I guess they just quit mowing it.
Who mows that area across from the school that's behind the fence of the property up on the corner announcing that motion?
On which page are you asking?
Pardon?
What page are you on?
Um, well...
Are you on the F6?
The middle.
F6, F6.
Yeah.
Yeah, F6.
So that area actually, are you speaking of this area right here?
Yeah, I'm talking about the, the area on Good Road, south of Beltline, on the east side, that's behind the fence of the housing addition there on the corner.
So the HOA was mowing it for the longest.
Well, I understand there's not an HOA.
Well, I know we have actually went and mowed it for a safety standpoint, because it got to the point where it got so high you couldn't see any signage or anything. So the city actually went out and we mowed it in that area. But I know, like I said, the HOA was mowing it, and then all of a sudden, that's what I'm saying, all of a sudden, it just like, just stopped mowing altogether.
And so you take responsibility for that area now?
When it comes to safety, yeah, I will have our guys mow them, yes. When it comes to safety for children and pedestrians and everything, yes, ma'am.
If I may, Wayne.
Yes, sir.
Is that a private property, or who does that, does that belong to the school district? Does it belong to us? Are you charging the property owners for mowing?
No, sir, I haven't been.
So I can be helpful with that, Councilman. The city's obligation for properties that are owned by HOAs is to remove the danger. We're not really sure what the story was behind why the HOA stopped mowing. One of the property owners said that, well, what will y'all do if we dissolve our HOA? And apparently, they did dissolve their HOA. And so I don't know that the council has a policy to address that, but we are doing what state law says, which is to remove the danger. And so if it causes a nuisance with rodents, or you can't see around the signs, or you can't safely navigate, then that is the city's responsibility. What we have been doing on another part of the neighborhood is we send our contractor out there, and we do put a lien on it, and then charge it back to the HOA as a way to recoup those costs, but we...
So nobody's been paying the cost to y'all? No standard notices and stuff?
Well, she files it with the court. She, with Dallas County.
So it's Dallas County.
Well, she has to file it with them, the lien.
So how many times have you mowed it, Wayne?
I know we've mowed it.
For your crew?
So our crews, I know we've mowed it quite a few times, especially when we realized that the HOA wasn't going to mow it anymore. You know, we, we would keep an eye on it, and once it gets to a point, it's like, okay, well, we need to go mow it. Obviously, they're not mowing it, you know? So we went, and especially, we mowed it, we mow it more often when school's in session. There's a sidewalk over there, kids cross over there, they walk over there. I don't want any kids that, you know, hiding in the grass or something, jump out in front of a car. So if we mitigate the grass, you know, then we don't have to worry about that.
And so this, this indicates that you mow on the west side of Good Road, all the way between Beltline and Mars?
No, ma'am, we do not. If you look at the G6, huh?
It's green?
If you look at G6, you can see right here, between the apartment complex, actually takes care of the apartment complex. So before, it stops before the apartment complex.
Now, Ma'am, Wayne, may I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Isn't the owners of the property to mow out in front of their property?
According to the ordinance, yes, ma'am. That is correct. And a lot of times, too, if you look, I know, if you live on South Good Road, there is a big storm drain over on the west side of the road, which is one reason why we maintain that area, is for the storm drain, to try to get the grass mowed. That way, if a big storm comes or whatnot, it does not impede the flow of water or anything. That's, there's that big, it's two culverts on some driveways and some driveways, it's a huge culvert. I don't even know what size it is, but there is that big storm drain on the west side.
That's where the flow from the whole city goes down, right?
That's from the flow from the highway. It, a lot of it comes down Beltline and flows that way, and then comes down Mars and then goes back.
And so between the overpass and how toward the east, do you maintain most parts of Beltline?
On the overpass of Beltline?
From the belt, from the overpass east?
From the overpass east, not all of them, no, ma'am. Not all of them, no, ma'am. Some of them is in Dallas County. If you drive that way, you'll see Dallas County maintenance begins, and it's pretty choppy right there on Beltline. There's like three or four times it goes, you're in Dallas County, you blink your eyes, you're out of Dallas County. Then you're back in Dallas County, then you're out of Dallas County, and it does it for a little bit. But once, once it stops and you're in Wilmer, then we do maintain most of it, not all of it, but most of it.
And so has any changes been made on the maintenance, I guess you would say, of the overpass area?
Has any of it been changed? As like, have we taken over the maintenance over the overpass? We have not taken it over. We did, when it rained last, sorry, when it, when it rained last, after it stopped raining, the crews went out there, and we did pick up underneath the overpass, and we did pick up the tires and everything else, even though it's not ours yet. We went ahead and did it, get the eyesore eliminated. You know, with it raining, it wasn't like they could go mow or anything, and I wasn't going to pick them up, picking up trash in high water or anything. The water crew actually went out there and unstopped the storm drain, those underneath the overpass, to get the water to flow better. And then the fellow works crew went and picked up the area underneath the bridge.
So is TechStop still working on the improvements?
The Green River Project is still going on currently. Yes, ma'am.
Do you think they'll fill in that big old hole?
The big hole where?
It's a big, deep hole on the, on the overpass side of the, of the ramp. Once you exit out off of the highway and you're coming toward Beltline, right there, if your tire was to slide off the road, you'd be in a hole about that deep, and it's been there forever.
You're talking about, so Ruth, if I understand you right, it's like between the two lanes, but it's, right?
And it's on the end, it's off the, off the ramp. It's there on the edge.
Right, on the edge, yes, ma'am.
Just as you come out of the Chevron station. I mean, yeah.
Chevron?
Chevron. If you were to come out from the side of the hill and to try to get onto the road, to try to go onto Beltline, there is a big crevice on that side of the road that, and a very bad pothole right there beside it, and it's been there forever.
And I can call TechStop again. Like I said, I can call TechStop. A lot of people call the city, and they've even resorted upon TechStop, too, because sometimes, I mean, for instance, there's a pothole on Pleasant Run, the exit of Pleasant Run and I, right on the highway to the service road, and I've had nine calls. I've called TechStop nine times. Other people's called TechStop. I mean, I can, I'll keep calling them. I don't mind calling them. They just, I mean, I don't...
It's left at TechStop.
Right. I mean, depending on their maintenance and what they schedule.
So do you have any kind of a date that they'll be finished? Or do we just get whatever time they have?
So when you're talking about with the Green Ribbon Project?
Yeah, so that we can take over the maintenance and then address it on a more regular basis, obviously, than they do. I mean, I know that you've heard me speak about it several times, and I feel like that's the focal point of our city, people that come in here, and it, it just always looks so junky and trashy. And we don't, you know, that's, that's the way we present our city to new people or our own people.
Right.
And I just would love for us to take ownership of it and do something positive about its appearance.
I understand.
Any other questions?
Wayne, can you get an F5?
F5 or F6?
F5. I don't have one.
I don't have an F5.
Well, I have an F5. Here, I will let you look at this one. My question is number thirty and thirty-one along Beltline. There's homes, there's the dollar store, and it's in green. Do we mow that, or is that like a roadway that we are responsible for? Why are you mowing that that's on Beltline?
So we typically do not mow that. That's why I said, there's some that, that we have to edit on this map. It's also like in, that's what I was going to make a point, too, to say, right here beside the school, it also has that we mow this area beside the school, which we do not mow, that's owned by TechStop. No, not TechStop, Encore. Encore actually mows that. So, and I have an active list in my office that me and the superintendent go through and look like, okay, why is this on the map? Why is, because we inherited the maps. So as we're going through, we're editing everything that we know shouldn't be mowed. Like you said, I mean, on like...
It's thirty and thirty-one.
Right, so on thirty, on thirty, the thing is, is even if, even when the citizen mows that area, they leave grass about this high on the edge of the road. So, and they let it grow, and it's right there in the corner. So again, it impedes any kind of vision for the traffic or anything. So when we're, when we're cleaning up on Beltline, I tell the guys, hey, we're already in that area, go ahead and knock that little section area. It's not the entire section, but it is, you know, a little, I'd say probably six, seven foot area, but it gets, the homeowner lets it get a little tall. And then also on thirty-one...
Sorry, I'm going to go back to what Mr. Kumpo said. If we're, there is something that's a responsibility of the homeowner, we should be building So, I mean, we can put a little sign or sticker or something on the door and give them twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours to fix it, and if they don't, then the city can go back, and then we build them. I mean, your department doesn't have the money to begin with, right? We don't need to be taking responsibility for private property. They need to take care of their own property. And that may be procedures that needs worked out within your department and the city administrator, but, I mean, that's, your time is too valuable. There's other things that need to be done.
And if I may, getting back to the freeway there, we're going to, that's liability on y'all guys. It's TechStop. And what happens if something happens to y'all when y'all are up there trying to fix it? And I wouldn't want y'all to get hurt, and then who's going to pay for the liability when y'all are doing somebody else's stuff?
And that's what I was going to ask. Are y'all covered when you do work around where TechStop is?
That would be an HR question. I mean, I don't think we are, if we're doing work on the highway, you know?
And we need to talk about our tractors and stuff that you might destroy trying to do this. Who's going to pay for it?
I understand that there's neighboring cities that contract out for this, and we've talked about this before, and letting other companies take that responsibility that TechStop not caring for the, for the streets and the sides and the roads and things. So that may be something to put into this upcoming budget.
So one of the things that had we met for the Parks Board, one of the things that we were bringing forward was the Keep Texas Beautiful. The city secretary and the records management employee had this program in another city. And when they did the program, they found out, they talked to their contact with Keep Texas Beautiful, and of course, yes, it is too dangerous. TechStop realizes that. And so what they have offered is to allow the city to sponsor the roadway. And so that was what we were bringing to Parks Board, and had we met Coram with CDC, we were going to ask the CDC if they would want to sponsor the, the highway from Fulgham down to Malord Bridge. Well, in having those discussions, we found out that they actually show us from Fulgham to Pleasant Run, Pleasant Run to Beltline, and then from Beltline on down, they're showing Hadis Ferris. And so we have to get that resolved. But they will come and pick up litter monthly. I don't think it has to do with the mowing portion of it, but they will come and pick up litter monthly. As part of being members of Keep Texas Beautiful, they can also put the sign out there. Now, I'm not familiar with how the other cities did it, or how they got funds, or council authorized them funding to put that in, but there is a monthly grant of fifty thousand dollars that the city could apply for once we become a Keep Texas Beautiful and Keep America Beautiful city, and then we could get grant funding to put our sign up there and then sponsor monthly litter pickup that TechStop would do, and then they would build this thing. So we have built that into the budget proposal for you all, but we were going to ask the CDC if they would consider entering that program and then putting funding this budget here toward that. So we've been working hard. We hear you, Councilwoman Neiman, and we've been working hard to try to figure out a solution for the freeway. And then once we can get a final on the Green Ribbon Project, we hope all of that will come together, but we don't necessarily control their top lines.
This is certainly a project that's close to my heart, and I would really like to see us bear down on it.
Any other questions?
Do you have a lady working on your crew? A woman?
We have just hired one. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
It is.
She, she has worked, she was actually on temp, she was with the temp agency last year. She came back with a temp agency this year, and now she is a full-time employee with Wilmer. Yes, ma'am.
About a month ago, they were mowing Beltline. They did a real good job. I mean, and that woman out there, she knows how to use a trash bag and get that broom. She really did, she did a good job. I know we're just talking about mowing and stuff, but water standing, you know, like it did under the bridge, right there at Blackwell, right in that area, I guess it's a drainage thing, and Beltline, it's at Black, something that's like stopped up there or what, because there's still water, always trying to get over another lane and keep splattering it all over the car.
So a lot of that, I've actually stopped there in the mornings, because I come through early enough, and there's actually sprinklers on by the bank. So early in the morning, the bank has the sprinklers on for a while, and then it's until their sprink, when their sprinklers are off, it really doesn't stand there. But once their sprinklers are on, their water, when it runs off the, the greenery and stuff, sits right there. But I've stopped, too, because I was like, okay, there's not water here. When's water going to be here?
Yeah, later on in the day, it's still there. It's still there.
Right.
It's a swap line.
We got it.
That's all I got. Thank you.
If not, we proceed. Thank you, Wayne.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, does the city of Wilmer sign on the west end median?
Councilmember Neiman? We didn't move on until you addressed that.
Oh, I see. Okay. Well, it's been, I'm not sure how long it's been since that sign was destroyed, but I was on the unification committee when we had those signs put up years and years and years ago. And it's, it was destroyed, I think, by a car that hit it. And I've been told that it's never been in the budget to replace it, but I just am wondering if we could not put it in the budget to replace it. The citizens worked hard to get it there. It was, we were really proud when we put it there, and I just think it's a shame that it was destroyed and then just abandoned. So I'm just hoping that someone could tell me if there are plans to rebuild it. I also heard somewhere, and I'm not sure where, that we were supposed to get a welcoming sign out on forty-five. Is that so? And if so, what's the progress on that?
Yes, ma'am. So the Wilmer sign that was on the west end of town was destroyed by a car that it was beyond repair. Typically, when there is a city asset, we go to TML to see if it was covered, and it was not covered on the insurance. We did, we had a citizen that came in and asked, well, why didn't the city do restitution? And so I corresponded with Chief Kim to see, you know, what that process would look like. This was a, an offender, a multiple offender, who has done this several times and probably has spent more of his time incarcerated than being able to restore what had been destroyed. So the other sign was hit multiple times as well. We did get a mason to repair it. We have since gotten it on our insurance. It was hit again when we had to repair, and we found out it didn't have footings. And so Wayne worked with the contractor to get footings on there, and under TML, it's considered art. And so if the council desires to put that in the budget, to rebuild a replica of what is on there, then we will certainly put it in the budget. That is something that CDC as well could fund as part of quality of life and in that realm, to be able to put it in. And we did have that on the agenda as well.
Has it ever been proposed to CDC?
So we were proposing it Tuesday. So, we were proposing it Tuesday when we didn't meet Coram.
No, no, no. I mean, in the past six.
Prior to that, no. We had not gotten a request from the council or anyone until... This is the first time that you have said anything about replacing it. We've not gotten a request.
I think I've mentioned it before, but maybe not specifically.
Not in this session. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we need to, we need to pursue it.
We can make sure that's included in the budget proposal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me. This is in reference to that sign too, because I was reprocating from it. And I thought at that point, y'all were gonna try to, like you said, it was unreparable, it was broke off. But that's been five years ago. And it's, that was something you could be proud of when you came across the railroad, City of Wilmer, one of our signs. We ain't got it there now, so... But it didn't seem like it'd be that expensive to, or maybe get some volunteers around town that can do work like that to put us assignment there, you know, like we did Welcome to Wilmer. And even though these ladies are the ones that had it fixed first, this one I'm handling out there, so... But, or take donations or something to fix our sign, whatever. City don't have any money. That's all I have.
And then, to address your Welcome to Wilmer sign, we were pursuing through text dot. They have the big green signs. And so, after we found out about Keep Texas Beautiful, we felt like that might be a better solution where it would cost money to the general fund. And so, we can still pursue that where it's a text dot sign. But if the goal is to make it more aesthetically pleasing, then the Keep Texas Beautiful probably would be the better option. But we certainly can bring that forward and show both renderings and allow the council to decide in the budget proposal.
Just, for example, Ferris has just been the recipient of a beautiful welcoming sign that's out on the sign. And it's really very pleasing to see. And I would just hope that Wilmer could join in on something like that.
Absolutely.
Discuss boarding commission appointments being moved to May?
So, we would respectfully request to postpone this one as this was with the city secretary. When her biggie's looking, she's out today. I apologize for that. If we could move it to the August work session, if that's okay? Or if you'd like to discuss, and then we can provide more clarity?
I'm happy to table it until the next time.
Okay.
Just to explain why I asked to discuss it in the first place is I think Councilmember Jacobs mentioned that when it was moved originally from, well, I can't say that because we weren't even given the chance to make our appointments for more than a year after I was first elected. So, then when we did make the appointments and now then they wanted to move it, I just feel like that it was set to be in more of a coordination with the council term. And so, I would like, that's the discussion I would like to have. And I'm more than willing to wait until we have full staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number four, discuss facilities construction for municipal complex.
So, earlier this week, we provided a memo showing the town hall meeting with the municipal complex that was discussed. I think that was part of the strategic roundtable. But we, beyond that, we didn't know what specifically you wanted to talk about. So, we're available for questions.
In the, I'm not sure what to call it. It started out to be a retreat. It ended up to be a work session. But that day that we all met here and discussed everything, it was mentioned that in order to proceed with plans, that we needed possibly to go to the voters with it. And I would just like a thorough explanation of how that would work and how that would work.
Yes, ma'am. So, because the construction of the police department and public works was associated with the police department, there is a language in the state law that would allow, and council directed me at the time, to explore how we could move forward with funding for the entire facility's construction. And after having the town hall meeting and looking at logistics as to how many different buildings were on this site, it was determined that it probably made more sense to do police and public works off-site, allow them to move off-site, and then work through demolitions for this site. We could still continue to work at city hall and build the property at the footprint where the current library is at that time. And then, once it was built, then where current city hall is, that would become a parking lot. So, that was sort of the, that's a, just a quick, you know, on what the discussion was. We did a bond issuance or certificate of obligations to start the construction. The council approved a guaranteed maximum price. And so, that was based on legislation, state legislation at that time. Under this most recent legislative session, there is legislation that one will limit municipalities on debt now. So, it is, if, if the desire of the governor is brought forward, then the city wouldn't even, at this point, as a municipality, be able to decide up to a cap, similarly what they did with the property taxes, to even issue debt. They are proposing that all debt goes to voters and that it has to be, in order to approve it, to go to voters, I believe it has to be a supermajority on council. So, that is currently being discussed on the state level, which is how we follow it. So, we're not sure if that's gonna make it, but that may be our new normal that it does go to voters moving forward for all cities. And there's not a way that you can do it any other way.
And rightfully so.
Yes, ma'am. Well, that, it looks like it might be the new rules, so... But we heard y'all that we would like for any future debt issuances to go before the voters. And based upon timelines, we would not be able to get that on the ballot. They moved all the ballots to November. And so, the next available ballot would be November twenty twenty-six.
I think I've made this statement more than once, that I feel like we are the stewards of the taxpayers' money. And whether we go to a bond election or whether we vote here on how we spend it, I think we need to be accountable to the people who elected us. And anything of that nature, I think, should go to the voters, whether it's legislature or not. This is, this is just common sense that we have the citizens of our city have an input on the way that we spend the money that comes to the coffers of this town. That's just my opinion, but I really feel strongly that the citizens are the focus here. And they need to have a say in how this money is spent.
And I would like to say something. Yes, it could go to the voters, but it had been approved and a lot, a lot of money has been spent. We would lose, and this, I'm talking about millions of dollars. We would lose all that. The citizens would have paid for something that they didn't do. Like what? You're trying to take away something that was done a few years back. It was approved for us to have a new city hall, a new police station, and a fire station. That was all brought up and it was passed. We did everything we are supposed to do to get those facilities. We have spent millions of dollars.
On the police station?
On, no, not on just the police station. I'm talking about the police station, the waterworks, and the new city hall. That was in on it too.
Tell me what we've spent on the new city hall?
I can't give you exact numbers.
No, I mean, what? What it was fit for?
To lay out how it was to be built. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we spoke about that in our meeting that day. And if we choose to go ahead with that, then we've got the plans already. We haven't lost it.
But you're wanting us to drop all that and take it back to the citizens? You're gonna lose all that, millions of dollars, but the city?
We won't lose a penny.
Yes, we will.
If we go forward, then we've got the plans already.
You know, y'all said you didn't want those plans. You did say.
Oh, no, I didn't. I was the one that said we need to review the plans and see if they're still workable. I think it would be ridiculous to dispart them after we've paid for them.
Item number five, discussion on the monthly financials.
So, Councilmember Nealon, I believe you put this on here, but we had tabled the financials. And then, we do have the April and May financials and a presentation available. But we're happy to answer any questions related to any concerns that you had with replacing it. Or Mayor Proton.
Can we turn these speakers up a little bit? I don't have a lot of room.
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear it, ma'am?
Okay.
Is that there?
Okay.
So, this was placed on, it was a request on the last council meeting to discuss. But if you recall, we had, you had asked to table the March financials. And then, we have the April and the May financials. And then, we provided the monthly financials and we placed that in your binder on the dais.
Yes, yes.
Showing, and we answered the questions and then we provided the check register as well. And we put it in there in a way that you could see it on there. So, if there were concerns with the last one, I think, I know you wanted it in a monthly format, in which we did for April and May. And, but we're happy to discuss any other concerns that you might have.
Okay. Should we start with complaints and questions on financials?
Yes, ma'am.
Please, when you give these out like today, or like April and May?
Yes, ma'am.
You don't even have time to look at them. You aren't asking questions. I mean, we're supposed to be... We're supposed to have enough time to review, not just come out and put it down and there it is. Okay, you're, you know, you're ready to approve it. But I did go over the other and I did have questions on that. I don't know if I want to make them up there. And, or, you know, it's just my questions, what I found. I'm not, you want me to ask you now?
Yes, ma'am. So, if you recall, some time ago, there, what I was told when I was hired here was that the council, very much what you said, is that the council didn't have adequate time to review. However, the financials were being advanced to other folks in the community. And so, I was told to not include that in the packet. And so, I am happy to include it in the packet. We are working on more transparency. So, as I mentioned to you all today in a memo, we have provided the check registers on the website.
I saw it today. That's good. That's good.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have to be, you know, I need, you know, asking for them.
Yes, ma'am.
And then get them in the, at a council meeting and, okay, here it is.
But we will not, we will not put them on there until you all have seen them. So, until we've delivered them to council, we will not put them on there. So, if that direction has changed, I'm happy to do whatever you all would like me to do.
Well, I do, I do have a few questions on this that I, but I don't know if you wanna discuss them in closed session or you want, here in the audience?
If it's financials.
Okay, it's financial. Okay, as I was going through that last quarter of the financials, I noticed something, a lot of money. First of course, that was in, had to the state comptroller, state fees on citations. And I, I called the first one. I mean, I noticed the first one, I've never had seen this, you know, this big amount having go to the comptroller. So, was this something that just hadn't been paid, that they had to do a lot of catch-up money on or?
So, monthly, we have to pay the comptroller from what we collect. And so, there are percentages and... Administrator has a report that she does for the apartment that outlines all of those fees. And we can get that.
There's a lot of fees across there, but they're broken down on that report. Every page. I mean, every, every posing.
And that, if you notice, monthly, because we collect money from tickets and different things that...
Yeah, I wonder that. I worked there twenty-four and a half years.
Yes, ma'am. So, I can get you a copy if you'd like for us to give you a copy.
This is what I'm referring to because I had never seen this show up like this.
Oh, okay.
Like July the twenty-sixth, had to pay the comptroller, hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. And, but wasn't paid but hundred thirty-eight, one hundred and thirty-four, sixty-two, I don't know. Why the difference there? And then, the next one was a hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight, twenty. Well, I'll tell the fees. And the next one was a hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine. And which, these three was a total of five hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-three. But in your budget, all you, I saw on there is fees was for the court technology and the court security, which came to both of the, the two came to thirty-six thousand. It's all like y'all were expecting to have. It's all like y'all were expecting to have, pay on those two fees. So, and then, and, and the, the court budget was not for, but for three hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-three. And then we're paying, I've already paid out five hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-three. Big difference there. They don't have any money to operate on. Most places would say the budget's gone, so six months to go.
So they, it's a pass-through, so they collect all of the money? And then out of that money, a portion of it goes to court and then the other portion goes to.
The fees, yes ma'am, I'm aware of that. But, I mean, that, I, I've never, I've never seen this before. And also in, in your last budget, there, you did, there wasn't nothing, you know, budgeted in there for the judge. They were just left blank. But also I noticed that twice a month, there's five thousand dollars, which would be a total of ten thousand dollars a month, that's coming out of general fund and that's transferred to the court each month. And I don't know if this is to cover this, some of this comptroller bills we've had to pay or what.
No ma'am. So, there was an audit before I got here that our CPAs had done. And they found where the city had used some of the court technology and court security money. And so each month, the general fund pays those two funds back based upon the number that was owed. And so we are making sure that you can see that and that the auditor can see that the general fund is paying those two restricted accounts back the money. And I don't, I don't know what all occurred, but there was something that the auditor caught. And the general fund, the city had used some funds out of those two funds and we had to pay that.
That's our core problem.
Yes ma'am. So we are, we are showing that, we're reflecting that in the accounts payable so that our auditors can see it and so that you all can see that we're paying that money back. One of them is probably at about thirty-six thousand, so it's really close to being paid back. But I can certainly get you a copy of that as well. So that you can see, and we actually, in the backup information, we show every payment. And we show from when it began payment. And that's in the backup for each check.
I was real, real concerned with that because I don't know about the other departments, but I don't know if the court department is, that is, they operate on that budget.
Yes ma'am.
And there is no extra spending or anything else, you know, they're, they're old school, so.
Yes ma'am.
And then all of a sudden, you know, they don't have any money. Looking at this, they've already used all the budget, paying all these fees back, so.
To address your question about the judge, if you recall, Judge is on a contract. And so he would be paid out of other professional services. And the judge that you see on, it's part of QuickBooks, we don't take it off. If we take it off, then we lose the history. And so we left that, that name on there, but it doesn't have anything budgeted. But because Judge is a contractor, he's paid out of other professional services. And we certainly can get you that information as well so you can see those invoices.
So that, that is why that five, uh, ten thousand a month is transferred on the general fund?
I don't, I don't think it's, no, that's, that's completely different.
Five thousand dollar checks?
Yeah, that's, that's from the audit. Yeah, the other professional services is from the court budget.
Okay, yeah. I know, I've noticed that in every, every department. So, but anyway, that, that was my concerns there, that with their spreadsheet, when they make a deposit, that spreadsheet has everything broke down to the penny. This you pay out, this you keep, this you send to other departments. So, I'm, I'm, I'm bragging on them because that's, you know.
It's, it's very.
We had set it that way, that every penny was covered.
Yes.
And those two fees, the only thing you could use them for was, you know, court security and court security. We did have a thing you walked through here at the door, you know, the court bought that metal detector, you know, the catch if you had a weapon. I don't know what happened then, so that was purpose here.
Yes ma'am.
I don't know what happened to it, but, but anyway, that's, also another thing, well, I have one other question that I noticed. Why are we paying, I hate to ask this out, out in the open, you know, why are we paying that Lennard home?
So, it was a refund.
Four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars?
Yes ma'am. So, it was a, so they built a whole bunch of homes, they had three hundred and fifty-three homes. They had to purchase the meters for the construction. And then they have to purchase the meters for each house. And so we couldn't get that amount of meters in that amount of time. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Wayne. But they purchased their own meters, but typically the city would purchase those. And so we had to refund them for, they had to purchase it because they can go and get it and take it out of their budget versus we were not. We didn't know we were going to be growing. As part of the growing pains, we put a, we told y'all we would have a certain amount of growth and we put that, we're very conservative in the budget and didn't realize that they were going to be building that many homes that fast. And they were willing to go ahead and purchase it and then refund them the money. But we certainly can get you a copy of the backup so that you can see that.
Just a lot of money going out, so I'm curious. Okay, that's all I have right now. I think we'll, we'll be able to grab yours.
Ms. Jacobs?
No, I just wanted, for clarification, when you said it was a pass-through, my question was, so was that visitors going through the highway or within town who had some kind of ticket or a citation or something paid fee from the, the judge declared? So that fee was not from our budget, it came from the ticket itself? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what you're hearing.
Thank you.
Yes. We also have a similar contract, so Lombarder, who's our tax accountant, they do the same thing. It doesn't, actually, we collect the money. And then based on the money that's collected, we pay them out of that money. So the city has their money, we never have to pay the money to them and them paying us back. Except in the case of Lennard because it was, it was too much at one time.
That's all for this meeting, right?
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
I would just like to say to the council that I think the work sessions are very beneficial. The fact that we can discuss things, ask questions, and know what's going on in our city. I think it's very beneficial. And I would personally like to see us have a work session maybe at the first month, first meeting of each month. Go ahead and schedule it and schedule time for our police chief, our fire chief, Wayne in Public Works, you, Kristen, all of you department heads, if you have, you know, just to tell us what's going on in City Hall. I mean, not wait till we just have to vote on it, but let us know new things that are coming in, business that's being taken care of, things that we don't normally know. I think that would be very beneficial to all of us and I would like to see that happen. So, let's think about it.
I've got something to say too, and, and on May. Uh, the leaders of this community, we've got the right to come in here and, and, Rona. We've got the power to come up there and sit with her and explain it, you know, she'll explain it, how the city works if we don't understand it. We don't have to bring this up to a meeting. We can walk in anytime, any day, five days a week, and sit her down and talk.
All you have, all they have to do is call. Oh, you're referring to me on that?
I'm talking to everybody, we're all leaders of this community. I'm talking about the mayor and everybody that sits here.
And I will say, I've called Rona at nine o'clock at night to ask questions. I've called Wayne at night. So, yes, you know, if something that comes to our mind that we think is really important, you know, I, I will call and say, you have, or, normally I send a text message first to anyone. Are you available to talk? Because I want to respect their private time. And I think I've only wanted, once or twice that I've gotten, can you give me fifteen minutes? Something like that. But they're very receptive, so yes, I, I agree. I think that Saturday, you know, our training or whatever you wanted to call it, that half a day, two days in winter, half a day was very beneficial. And there's times that we as a team have to get together because the citizens did elect us. And you made the comment as we were stewards of the community, but we're stewards for the community for more than just finances. And so there's times that, you know, we're going to disagree on a lot of things, but there are times we got to remember we are a team and we're a team for them.
And by, and by, I've got something to say too. Our, our city administrator is really, really important in this little team we have. We've got to involve her and our city secretary too. And our lawyer.
So anyway.
Which is my point in asking for a work session on a regular basis so that we can get together and all of us that are present can feel.
Hear the same message. I agree with you, I agree with you, I agree with you fully. I just want you to know that, you know, I don't want it to make it seem like the only time we can hear from them is here when we were on the DIAS. We can contact them at other times. But I agree with you, you know, hearing the same message at the same time is very beneficial. And so if it's not just every month, every quarter, something like that. Because the, those that missed that Saturday, I, I think it was very beneficial to hear from our fire pl, our fire chief and our police chief and everything happening within the city. We had it right back at that moment. And so, yeah, I agree with everything you said. If not monthly, every quarter.
Does anyone else have anything to say? If not, this meeting is adjourned at seven oh two. Guys, we're going to take a fifteen-minute break and we'll be right back.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Wilmer City Council to order at seven eleven. On behalf of the City Council, I'd like to extend a warm welcome and thank you for joining us this evening. Your presence reflects the strong commitment to, strong commitment to civic engagements. And we truly value your interest in the work and progress of our city. As a reminder, this is a formal meeting of the City Council. We ask that everyone in attendance maintain respect, decor without any prejudice. Disturbance, outburst, or any, or any appropriate language will not be permitted. The individual may be asked to leave or be removed by the sergeant of arms if necessary. Thank you again for being here and for supporting our continued progress of our city. At this time, I would like to ask Pastor Harris to lead us in invocation. We ask that everyone please stand if you are able.
All right, let's pray. Most gracious heaven, you Father, we pause in this moment to acknowledge your presence. You are God alone, you're sovereign, you're faithful, and you're just. Father, we thank you that there is nobody like you. Lord, we give you praise. We thank you not because of what you do, but because of who you are. Lord, you are our source, you are our strength, you are our God. Lord, we lift up the city of Wilmer before you right now, God. Lord, we lift up its leaders, its people, and its future. We pray specifically for our mayor, the city administrator, all the city council members, and every city official representing here today. Give them wisdom, clarity, and compassion as they lead. May they be guided not by personal agendas or preference, but may your perfect will be done. Challenge their hearts, God, to see beyond political lines and personal gain. And instead, seek what is right, seek what is just, and what serves all people, rich or poor, old residents, new residents, and future residents. We ask for your divine guidance in every decision that's made, that it may bring peace, progress, and unity in this community. Remind them that leadership is a calling and with that calling is great responsibility. Let your presence fill this room in every decision that's made here today. Let your name be glorified in all this done. It's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance, Ms. Turner will.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move on to our presentation, presentation items. I will turn it over to Ms. Garza to begin the portion of this agenda.
Items under presentation are special public recognition, staff recognition, and proclamation honoring and recognizing Mike Raider. Mr. Raider, would you come over, please?
Hi, how are you?
Do you have family with you that you would like to stand with you for support?
Marilyn, you want to come up here? I'll introduce you to the boss.
That's why I asked her. Proclamation recognizing Mike Raider. Whereas Mike Raider, president of Prime Rail Interests LLC and Prime Forty-Five Development LLC, has demonstrated an enduring commitment to the growth and development of Southern Dallas County and the greater North Texas region through his visionary leadership in the commercial real estate industry. And whereas Mr. Raider began his real estate career in nineteen eighty-four and recognizing the strategic value of the DFW Logistics Corridor along Interstate twenty, thirty-five, and forty-five, became a pioneering force in assembling properties, developing industrial infrastructure, and leading investment partnerships that have transformed the regional landscape. Whereas in two thousand four, Mr. Raider's efforts were instrumental in bringing Union Pacific's one hundred million intermodal facility to the cities of Wilmers and Hutchins, an achievement that cap, catalyzed the creation and growth of the Dallas County Inland Port and gen, generated significant private investment in our area. Whereas in two thousand five, Mr. Raider and his partners developed nine hundred acres along Interstate forty-five to create the Sunrise Business Park, an eight million square foot industrial hub. an eight million square foot industrial hub. And in two thousand eleven, expanded this initiative with the development of Prime Port, a three thousand acre premier rail-serviced industrial park supporting distribution, warehousing, and technology. And whereas Mike Rader has played a vital role in developing more than eight thousand acres in Wilmer, Hutchins, Lancaster, and Dallas, making the Inland Port one of the fastest-growing industrial regions in the United States. And whereas in recognition of his decades of service, innovative development, and enduring impact on the North Texas commercial real estate community, Mike Rader was inducted into the twenty twenty-five North Texas Commercial Real Estate Hall of Fame on April the thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Now therefore, I, Laura Jacobs, on behalf of Sheila Pettit and the city council of Wilmer, Texas, do hereby recognize and honor Mike Rader for his outstanding achievements, transformational leadership, and lasting contributions to the economic prosperity and development of our city of Wilmer and the entire Southern Dallas County. Thank you.
Can I ask the big people coming along? Commissioner Price?
Turn it around so they can see.
Oh, you want that?
Yeah.
Could you join me, Commissioner? Come and join us up here. You're a big contributor factor in all of this. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody that you would like to say, Mr. Rader?
Yes.
You've got the floor, sir.
I am very proud of City of Wilmer. I was mentioned about nineteen eighty-four, and I see three, three major interstate highways. And I said, look at all this land, something's gotta develop here, something good. So, we started the project. It took me a few years because the initial place was in the city of Dallas. And I couldn't get Dell Computer, and I couldn't get NASCAR Speedway, so we had to start working south. And we got into Hutchins and Wilmer and Lancaster areas. It's been great. I've been blessed. I think the area's been blessed. I took a picture in an aerial back in about nineteen ninety-four and looked at it, and I said, this is gonna develop this way, this is gonna develop this way. Had a vision for the area. And it's really come very, very close. It's helped a lot. Two thousand three, I had the opportunity to get water into Wilmer, Dallas County, Dallas water. Because you're taking it off the well water that we were on. And that started some of the, really, that started really the initial investment. Is that it? Started the job growth. Subsequent to that, and I just looked it up today, twenty twenty-four, City of Wilmer's got two and a half billion dollar tax base. That's a lot of growth, ladies and gentlemen. I project you're probably gonna get close to five billion by the end of twenty thirty. That's a lot of growth, a lot more growth. And it's really because of all the community, city councils, and mayors, and people that I've worked with. I think one of the greatest additions of this city was in twenty twenty when the council hired professional management to help get things started and get it going. That management went out, put marketing efforts into, just into basically technology shows, developer shows. Next thing you know, here comes more development taking place. And it's just really a positive, positive, positive. Have a dream, keep faith, believe, and make it happen. I appreciate y'all, love y'all. Thank you very much.
Recognize and honor Parks and Recreation Month. Councilmember Nealon?
How about our chair and our vice chair in parks?
Proclamation. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Wilmer. And whereas parks and recreation promote health and wellness, improving physical and mental well-being of the people who live near parks. And whereas parks and recreation promote time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and overall well-being. And whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activity by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas parks and recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the city of Wilmer recognizes the value and benefits derived from its parks and recreation resources. And so, now therefore, I, Councilmember Lyndon Nealon of the city of Wilmer, and on behalf of the mayor and the whole city council of the city of Wilmer, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of July, twenty twenty-five, as Parks and Recreation Month recognition in Wilmer.
Recognition of Officer Almanza Junior for his five years of service. Chief Kemp, would you please come up and recognize Officer Almanza?
Thank you. Folks, this is Sergeant Arturo Almanza. And he is such a key instrumental part of the Wilmer Police Department. He's admired by his peers. He is a true leader. That is why he was promoted to sergeant. And not only that, he has a passion for and kind of leads and oversees areas of our department in making sure that Wilmer is as safe as possible from illegal drugs and narcotics. He leads that a lot. And he is just a leader in that area to the, to the troops. And I'd be remiss to tell you, if he started here when he was just a wee young man. Would you say, how did he start as a wee young man? He only has five years of service. That is an oversight. And tonight, I apologize to you for that. So, we're gonna present him with a continuing five-year award tonight. But the truth of matter is, in HR, wonderful HR, it just did not know that there was a very, very brief time, I mean, very brief, in his service. Arturo Almanza has served the city of Wilmer for ten years. Yes, he probably served for ten years. We're gonna correct this. We gonna, we gonna do this tonight, but we gonna get you the proper certificate and, and, and award to recognize. And I want to make sure publicly tonight, we recognize he's got ten dedicated years to the community of Wilmer. And I know from his heart, he loves you, and I love him, and I just appreciate it. So, tonight, I present you with this five-year continuous, but we will get you the ten year. We're honoring you tonight for ten years of living in Wilmer.
Discuss and provide updates to the city council calendar, including the addition of upcoming meetings to ensure council is informed and schedules align accordingly. Good evening, mayor and council. City Secretary Downs asked me to provide you with a few updates regarding upcoming meetings. First, a special city council meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July thirty-first, at six P.M. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss and consider appointments of the city's board and commission. City Secretary Downs would like to know your preference on how to proceed with applicants. Would you prefer to conduct interviews with each applicant, starting at six P.M., or would you rather receive all submitted applications and then hold a discussion among yourselves without conducting interviews? If interviews are preferred, each applicant would be allotted ten minutes in order to remain on schedule. We have received a small number of new applications along with several reappointment requests. Would council like to conduct interviews with the applicants or move forward with the discussion only? Additionally, please remind, be reminded that on Thursday, August the seventh, at six P.M., prior to the regular city council meeting, and item number five is to discuss and receive a presentation from Freezing Nichols Incorporated regarding stormwater utility fees.
I have a question. As in the past, when this, when applicants filled out the form to, to serve, they did a ranking system of what they wanted. Was that still this time? So, I don't think there's a need for me to interview. If they, if they ranked their preference. That's just my opinion.
On the online application, I don't think there was a ranking, a preferred ranking,
Do we know if people wanted to change from one committee to another? Or did a request for that? And I know you're not Ms. Downs, and so you're probably, you may not be able to answer that question, but.
I, I do know that we asked the other one that we would reconvene this and pick it up in the August meeting possibly and discuss this later.
That might be a better thing to do. I, I recommend we do that.
Right. So, we'll just move this to August the seventh.
Instead of the thirty-first?
Huh?
Instead of the thirty-first? Is that what you meant?
No, this is what, the questions that was just asked.
Yeah.
Well, she was requesting if you all wanted to conduct interviews at a special meeting on the thirty-first. But if there is more or less of a consensus that you all just wanna do it the way you did it last time, then we would ask you to do a special meeting. On the thirty-fourth, yes, ma'am. And we can reach out to you all individually when she returns back to office.
Okay. With the list of who's interested and who's up for three or four?
Under community announcement, there are no community announcements today.
We have a guest here for item number five, for Freezing Nichols.
Please. There he is. He, he hid back there.
Mayor, members of council, Freezing Nichols Incorporated has been overseeing the stormwater utility study. If you recall, this has been on the agenda for about two years. And they are moving forward with this and ready to discuss next steps to create in ordinance for a future public hearing of the city council. And I'll turn it over to Trey.
Excellent. Appreciate it, yeah. Trey Shanks, Freezing Nichols. I'm just gonna give you a quick update, I think. Does everybody have the slides?
Yes, sir.
His handouts. So, I'll, I'll just do a brief overview of this. And really, this is informational, but really informally looking for direction of do you want to move forward with the formal process of this. So, as I walk through this, now that's really what the, the purpose of meeting with you tonight is. So, briefly, on, on slide two, says what is the stormwater system? So, just for fundamental, you know, awareness of things, that's, that's everything that helps carry, you know, precipitation away from structures, off roads and the like. So, it's, you know, your storm pipes, the bar ditches, culverts, and the like at road crossings. All that infrastructure ages and needs maintenance. Sometimes it needs replacement or upsizing as storms are more severe than it's designed for. So, if you look on slide three, you see some of those types of problems that are typical to experience with storm systems. So, you know, things like erosion of creeks. As there is more development, there's more runoff that's occurring. And the velocity and the volume is higher. And so, that's more than the creeks, for example, are, you know, naturally designed for, or, you know, they're steady state. So, that erosion starts. That, that puts structures at risk and causes utter damage. Flooding, of course, you know, being the primary, you know, risk as you see in central Texas over the last couple of weeks, the terrible tragedies down there with the heavy storms. And then water quality. There, you know, you're one of the cities, one of the hundreds of cities in Texas that are required to protect the stormwater quality in your runoff as it goes into creeks and like. That's something you may have heard called the Phase Two MS four permit. So, that's what that specifically is for. So, on slide four, it says the solution to storm utility fee. If you look on that figure on the right, that's a map of North Texas. For some reason, it's printed twice. But the, that's, that just represents cities in North Texas. Everything that's shaded red is a city in North Texas that actively has a storm utility fee. Most cities in North Texas, more than a hundred across Texas, have a storm utility fee. And what is a storm utility fee? It's just a dedicated funding mechanism to, to pay for some or all of stormwater services. So, just like for your water service, you pay a water utility fee. Garbage service, you pay a garbage fee. With the stormwater, this is a dedicated funding mechanism, you know, for that that is really a standard across Texas. Texas state law, since nineteen eighty-seven, has specifically authorized it. So, it's called Local Government Code five five-two. So, there's specific stipulations that authorize cities to have it, but also set the constraints for it. So, an example of those constraints is it can only be used for storm-related activities. You can't, you know, reallocate that to some non-stormwater related purpose. And it can only be based off of the cost of the providing, the providing service. So, I'll walk through that a little bit as well. It also needs to be reasonable, equitable, and nondiscriminatory. So, I'll talk about how we make sure to take care of that for you as well. Okay, on the next slide, it says how is the stormwater fee determined? But just like with your water usage, you've got a meter, right? And that measures the flow that went through. You don't have that for stormwater. So, the common approach for stormwater is measuring the hard surface, the rooftop, the pavement, and the like that keeps that extra storm, that stormwater from soaking into the ground and is instead extra runoff than what would naturally occur. So, it's that extra runoff that requires your pipes to be bigger and bigger, the channels to be wider and wider. Requires sometimes what we call armoring of the creek channels to keep them from eroding. So, on the next slide, six, it says impervious area-based charge. What we've done is we've actually measured the impervious area, that hard surface, for every property in town. And so, you see a representation of that on the residential example there. And. And so you see a representation of that on the residential example there, and the commercial properties on the right. So the average amount of impervious area for a house, a residence in Wilmer, is 3,100 square feet. So that's not the living area, that's not the size of the house, right? That's the house itself. It's the driveway, it's the garage, it's the patio, walkway, it's everything, okay? So 3,100 square feet is all the impervious area, whether it's the rooftop and the pavement. So what we call that is the equivalent residential unit, or ERU. So here may reference that again and again. That's the unit of measure. So kind of like we talk about water, you know, per thousand gallons, a rate per thousand gallons. For stormwater, we talk about it in per ERU basis. So on the right, you see that green graphic that shows a business. That business has, you know, as an example, 31,000 square feet. So that's 10 ERUs. To be equitable, that business would pay 10 times the amount of the average house. So we're, so we'll show what that looks like in just a minute. Okay. So before I jump into the cost aspect of things, are there any questions there? So on the stormwater costs, a couple of things. One, there's a proposed stormwater cost slide on eight that talks about proposed staffing to maintain the system. So there's not dedicated stormwater funding right now by establishing that with two maintenance workers and a field operations supervisor to get proactive maintenance, to get ahead of things, and we're trying to avoid being reactive. It's more, service is better and not being as costly. So there's equipment that's necessary with that as well. So a dump truck, a backhoe, and then a stipend for equipment rentals. So instead of buying our equipment that would be expensive, that you may not need throughout the year, just rent it on an as-needed basis. So that's a, you know, a $50,000 annual budget for that, as needed. On the next slide with nine, so that's, those are, you know, annual operating costs. On that, next slide is a summary, you know, overall, so, of costs. So one is, you know, contracted services. Two is the operating expenses that we talked about, so just annualized. First, you know, the capital equipment expense upfront, and then annual labor, maintenance, and operation of the vehicles. What you see in FY26 is a stormwater master plan. And so the master plan is to study all of your storm systems, identifying where do you have areas that you've got, you know, that are undersized, underserving, so, you know, a risk of flooding, risk of great erosion, especially as more development happens, get ahead of that. So that's proposed in FY26. And then below that, we'll come out of the master plan as identification of capital, recommended capital improvement. So that CIP program line item is to, is, you know, a placeholder, effectively anticipate we'll have capital improvements coming out of that. And so that's an annualized approach to take an address on this. And the last line, the operating reserve, is just what we call a fund balance, the no content of a rainy day fund, so. So taking those together, you've got a service need, you've got properties across town that we've measured their amount of impervious areas, their effective impact and use of the system. The recommended rate structure would be a flat rate for residential properties. So for single-family residences, with every residence would pay the same amount of $7.50 per month. And then a non-residential property would pay $7.50 per ERU, okay? So if they had twice as many, twice as much as the amount of impervious area as a house, then they'd pay twice the fee. And so you see three examples there. You know, on the left, the $7.50 for the residents, and that typical business would be paying $75 because it has 10 ERUs. And then you see a sample on the right of a large business as well. So what does it all mean, you know, overall? So what that does is that generates the revenue. We identified as anticipated needs for that operational service and the anticipated CIP needs in the out-years coming. It establishes that operating reserve to protect your funding. A very stable fee, stable revenue, and so it's predictable, allows you to maintain your system in a reliable manner over the long term. There's a reason that so many cities have it, is because you can really plan with this and you can provide good service with that. So if you look back on slide 13, you can see rate comparison. So what we've done is we've taken a typical size residence in Wilmer, about 3,100 square feet, and if we were to take that property and put it into these other cities, and Segoville, Red Oak, Glen Oaks, Prairie View, Salina, Lancaster, Dallas, DeSoto, Arlington, you see that Wilmer's $7.50 proposed fee would be about in the middle, a little bit just, you know, on the lower side of those comparison cities. Okay, so, went through that pretty quickly, but really, you know, the intent for this is to give you that overview and to ask me any questions y'all might have. Because there is a state law that, you know, authorizes that and sets those constraints, there's a formal process if you were to choose to adopt it. So the informal part of that is to get your feedback if you want to move forward with the formal process. That formal process is to, you know, publish the draft ordinance and fee schedule in the local paper, hold a public hearing, and then there would be council votes. So it doesn't go to the effect unless there's an affirmative council adoption of it. And so that's it. So what really we're looking for tonight is, you know, your direction, do you want us to move forward with that public notice and then the subsequent public hearing for a future council date later this year to vote on adopting this storm utility fee? Do you have any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There are no community announcements today.
Now we will move on to the citizens' comments.
We do have one citizen comment. It is regarding Agenda Item 11E. George, would you like to speak now or wait until 11E comes up?
I will gladly wait till 11E comes up. We also had a second item on there.
I apologize, yes. So 11 and then letter E.
Correct.
Yes.
So 11E, I'll wait till it comes up, but regular time put in on the agenda. On E, I'll have to address that.
Yes, sir.
Because that's...
Yes.
I noticed, what I'm, I'm George Leverett, 24 Meadow Lane, Wilmer, Texas.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. The item that I wanted to address that's on the agenda tonight is an executive session item. It's been an executive session item several times, which has me concerns. My hope and desire is, is that with the discussion and appraisal evaluation, however it's stated with our city administrator, my hope and prayer is that you'll be discussing, giving her a raise and a much longer extended contract. But because it's been on the agenda so many times, I suspect that's not the case. So I would like to give you my personal opinion on the matter. I think one of the best decisions that the city of Wilmer ever did in its existence was hire Rhonda Stringfellow as our city admin. Any discussion that I've had with her, any discussion that I've had with other folks, employees, fellow citizens, have nothing but praise for the work that she does. My personal observation is, I don't think there's a harder working employee of the city than Rhonda Stringfellow. I think that she's got the experience, she has the talent, she has the love for the benefit of this city, she does nothing that is not at the direction of the city council. My experience has been, once the city council gives her direction on anything, she does everything in her power to see that it's done accordingly. I don't think there's a city council, a city admin anywhere that you could find that's as qualified, as energetic, as focused, as experienced as Rhonda Stringfellow. And that's my three-minute comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was the only one?
That was the only one.
Okay. We will now move on into the consent agenda. Please read the consent items into record. Yes.
Consideration of approval of minutes from the May 15th, 2025 Special City Council Meeting Canvas. June 5th, 2025 Special City Council Meeting. June 5th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. June 21st, 2025 Special City Council Meeting, Council Retreat. Consider a resolution accepting the North Central Texas Council of Government Annual Population Estimates for January 1st, 2025. Consider a resolution amending the authorized signatories to execute payable checks at Commercial State Bank by adding Phyllis Slaus, Mayor Pro Tem, and removing Linda Diane Nealon, former Mayor Pro Tem. Consider a resolution approving the terms and conditions of an interlocal agreement by and between the City of Wilmer and North Central Texas Emergency Communications District here and after NCT 911, so that NCT 911 can operate and maintain the systems utilized for the provisions of 911 Emergency Communication Services, equipment, and system maintenance activities. Item number 10, discuss and consider a resolution of the City of Wilmer, Texas, suspending the July 31st, 2025 effective date of Encore Electric Deliveries Company requesting rate change to permit the city time to study the request and establish reasonable rates. Approving cooperation with the Steering Committee of City served by Encore to hire legal and consulting services and to negotiate with the company and direct any necessary litigation and appeals, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law. Requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel for the Steering Committee.
Counsel? May I get a vote?
Mayor, I need to abstain on item number six. I was not here for the canvassing of the votes, and I wasn't here for the council retreat. But I was here for the June 5th council meeting.
Okay. The others were here so they can vote?
Yeah, yeah, they can vote, yeah.
Okay. So you're abstaining.
I abstained for my, that section of it.
Okay.
May I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am, please.
When we previously accepted COGS, North Texas Council of Government's recommendations or estimation of our population, there was a lot of talk in the city that they didn't like the way that that was done. So Ms. Stringfellow, would you let, can you explain, so that it's in record, how this number for our population increase was developed by COGS?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The city's 2025 population estimate is broken down by housing type in addition to any group quarter's population. Household sizes and occupancy rates are provided by the Census Bureau, as well as secondary data sources are analyzed and researched in order to understand the latest trends throughout North Central Texas region. North Central Texas Council of Government's population estimates were calculated based upon building permit data supplied. There are multiple cities throughout the metroplex that utilize this service, they utilize, if there are any American Community Survey data that is conducted, which is conducted within the 10 years since this year. And so this helps us with grants, it helps us with projecting growth, for many other things, so it is very well recognized by the 13 counties that are part of North Central Texas Council of Government.
Any other questions? If not, may I get a vote?
We need a second.
Pardon me, but could you read it to the record what that population number is?
7,296.
Madam Mayor, I second Ms. Slaus's recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, may I have a vote?
Yes.
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 Please, wait a minute, wait a minute.
But I'm saying...
I need, no, I need for Ms. Turner to please speak up into the mic so the people out there can hear what you're saying. I can't even hear it. So please speak up.
Yes.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Five to zero. It is the public hearing now.
Conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number 2025-0717G, approving a letter of no objection for the 12.822-acre property described as Torrington Wilmer LP, generally located on East Belt Line approximately 525 feet west of Copart.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Carsten Lowe, and I'm a Development Manager of JPI. Today, I'm speaking before you regarding our proposed property, Torrington Wilmer. And we're asking for you to consider a resolution of no objection for the property. Now, I think there have been two very timely presentations that we've had today. The first one being from Mr. Rader's presentation, discussing the growth and the trajectory of the city, where the city of Wilmer has come from, the progress it's made, the jobs it has created, and the vision of where it's going. And over the course of our several council meetings, we've heard various feedback, feedback of ways that you all would like to see the city grow, the ways that you would like to see potential grocer stores, grocery stores, retail options, improvements to infrastructure. These types of things, we believe our project would play a role in. And so when we had the opportunity to speak for you at the, at the council executive session for the council work session, excuse me, we talked a lot about what are the opportunities from a developer's perspective, where can the city go, and what are the core opportunities for the various uses? So on the first slide of your presentation, I have that same slide. And right there at the very center, you see at the center Belt Line and I-45 as your central retail corridor. This is the biggest and greatest opportunity that you have for some of those wants and desires you have for your city. I think you all recognize that as well. And as you see the lines in red, those are the major thoroughfares, the access points for the various residents of Wilmer to navigate the city, to negotiate their way around various traffic issues and other challenges. And you see, as you grow out, you go from that central retail district into a medium-density residential, into a less dense residential, and ultimately further out, that's where you have your light and heavy industrial uses. That's where you have your light and heavy industrial uses. And so, as we think about our proposed project, if you flip to the next slide, the first thing we want to talk through is the improvements of Belt Line immediately outside our development. See, our parcel is roughly thirteen acres of a broader sixty-three acre master plan community, which includes potential retail uses, single-family homes, townhomes, different opportunities for industrial users as well. And so, we view this as an economic hub and an opportunity to build and develop the area. So one of our commitments, if should our development move forward, is to improve that intersection right there immediately outside. Right? We've had our civil engineer, Kim Lee Horn, do extensive studies to evaluate traffic patterns and what it would take for cars turning in and out of the development. And that's not just for our development, that's for all future developments in that area. So they looked at what, if the commercial was to go in there, what that traffic impact would be. So one of the things we're talking about doing is creating access points. Three primary access points to our development, and having that tie across, and then improving potential turn lanes, detention, and utilities such as sewer and wastewater improvements to extend lines for that future development. And so, when you flip to the next slide, this was one of the big things we talked about. And some of the biggest feedback we've gotten over the course of speaking with you all is the key challenge that exists at the intersection, particularly going westbound, on, uh, on Belt Line as it approaches I forty-five. And so, we talked about how that's a core constraint, especially at the early morning hours, where that traffic bottleneck's there and it poses a substantial problem. And, uh, we've also heard that there's some cha- challenges with drainage. And so, one of the things we looked at, and this dovetails onto the next slide, uh, to the presentation that Freeze and Nichols just gave. And that's, uh, we had our civil engineer draw up an exhibit to look at that intersection in particular, to look at what it would take to potentially widen that Belt Line expansion based on y'all's feedback of having a dedicated right-turn-only lane to go northbound, having an additional lane that would go both straight and right, allowing for more seamless flow of traffic in and through the area. And then we also had our construction team price out, based off of just this very preliminary sketch, what would it take to improve that intersection? We wanted to know all the things included as, not just the paving that it takes, but also the underlying road base to build a tech stop compliant road. We wanted to understand the box covert relocations. And we wanted to understand the power poles that have to go in place to support the traffic lights at the intersection. And so, in doing so, we determined, uh, based on those rough sketches, that's roughly seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to improve that intersection to this size and scope and scale that I believe would substantially improve that intersection. So one of the things that we've explored and heard from you all is that, should we move forward with our development, that improvements need to be made to Belt Line. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. And so, one of the things we would be willing to commit to is partnering with a development agreement to be able to understand what are the underlying terms, to understand, uh, what are the places where, what are the dollars we can contribute to help y'all, and you can utilize those funds for improvements such as this. And so, those fees that Freeze and Nichols talked about is key in the development community of helping with the growth expansion in infrastructure of cities. And we believe our development can play a role in that for the City of Wilmer. So in summation, on the last two slides, this project is going to be a quality design. It's best-in-class architect, known for building thoughtfully designed communities that are well-structured, very secure, uh, quality amenities, including resort-style pools, twenty-four-hour access security, cameras, surveillance, service with our third-party property management company to be sure that the trash isn't getting left behind and that it's truly well-maintained, because we are going to be a long-term stakeholder in this community so long as we're approved. And then, on the last slide here, qua- quality finishes. You see, uh, some pictures from one of our example properties where you see quality granite countertops, water-efficient fixtures, and various components that make Torrington Wilmer a place that people would be happy to call home. And so, last thing I would like to say is, we believe that should our development be allowed to move forward, that it would really make an impact. An impact for Wilmer, providing quality housing that creates opportunities for future retailers, for future industry to continue to come into the city and help make Wilmer a great place to be. So thank you so much, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Counsel, you have any questions? Thank you, sir.
I have, I have.
Oh, okay.
You know, I, I sometimes get a reputation as being against growth, and I am pro-growth. I do want Wilmer to grow. We have a reputation of being warehouse city, and so we've kind of put a issue to where as the council has said that we want to kind of not just accept every warehouse that comes in anymore. Um, but we currently have more apartments than we have homes. And so, likewise, I don't want to become apartment city. I'm looking at your pictures. I'm sure it's a quality program. Um, but we do have a city ordinance that says once something has been denied, it cannot come back for six months. And we're not, we're in less that timeline. I do understand, I'm just one member of the council, and you were invited by other council members who may not have been aware of that city ordinance. Um, I do have one question, though, about your design.
Absolutely.
Are there e- external stairs, or do they go into the building, get on an elevator, like the new apartments that are being built elsewhere to go up to their apartment?
Sure.
Are the, you know, th- these apartments, if they were to be built in our city, will be far away from some sa-, other, other areas that could, for safety.
Sure.
And so, my question was, can you describe what you said that, security? Can you describe the security? I know you said they have to go through a certain gate.
Absolutely.
But once they get through the gate, you can jump a gate. Once they get past that gate, are they able just to go upstairs? Or do they have to go into a building, push a code? Like, I have a friend that lives in Waxahachie, and when I visit her, uh, she ha-, I punch in a code that goes to her apartment, and she lets me in. So is that going to be something similar?
Yes, so, so we're going to have multiple layers of security, right? So, if you'll think about it, when you first drive up, you'll have to go through that access gate, right? That's the first line of defense right there. It has a call box, you can call your friends if they're guests, or you could go and check in at the front with the property management company to let them know you're there. And then, once you get past that first level of security, then, once you walk up to the building, each of those doors to the buildings are going to be secure. So those require key FOB access or the ability to ring someone in. That provides that next layer of security to where there's not just random people. Like you said, if a gate's broken or someone's hopping a gate, having that gate does you no good. And so, from that standpoint, uh, there's, then that's your next line of defense, right? And then, as you go up to the unit, every single unit has its own secure FOB access. And so, from a resident perspective, it's seamless, right? They have one FOB that gets them into the clubhouse to go use the fitness facilities. It gets them into the pool during the allow hours. But at every such step of the way, there is a checkpoint of which requires someone to be able to have appropriate access to get through to the next point. The other thing I would say is, as far as additional security, we will have twenty-four-hour recorded security cameras that's going to be monitoring the premise. We're going to have, uh, lighting, landscape lighting throughout the development. That way, it's not just some dark parking lot in the middle of the night, because we believe that creating a safe, quality place to live matters for the residents that live there. And so, we view that as no different. So that is our commitment, uh, should this development be allowed to move forward.
Well, I, I, I don't want you to think I'm against your, your development. It's just, you know, I want our city to grow in all areas, not just warehouses and apartment buildings, if that makes sense.
Sure. No, I certainly understand that, and.
And I did appreciate your, your study for our dangerous intersection, for you providing it for us. That's very appreciative. And, uh, anyway. I don't know how the cancel, council may move forward, uh, seeing as we do have a city ordinance that our attorney may be able to address in more detail, and whether or not we can even have a vote or not.
Sure. And, and my understanding of it, uh, if I may, is that when we came before you lapsed, we brought a resolution forward, and the vote for approval failed. So it wasn't recommended for denial. And so, our understanding is that it just kind of was left in limbo. And so, I'm, I'm not sure if that's a, an accurate interpretation, but that was what we were understanding. And then, one, one other thing I might add to your point about creating quality single-family homes, right? We are one piece of a small puzzle that is this master plan development. And so, through this development, there are opportunities for us to extend infrastructure, those water lines, those detention ponds, that make it feasible for those future single-family home developments. Because candidly, to do land development, it's expensive in a lot of ways, because there's so many improvements that have to go into place to support the underlying development. And so, by our development going first in this master plan, it's creating a pathway forward to be able to have the infrastructure in place needed for those future single-family homes.
And apart, how many apartment buildings, I mean, uh, apartments, individual apartments will there be?
So there will be three hundred units.
Three hundred. So just assuming they each have a car, maybe more than one car, one vehicle. You were saying you were looking at transp-, uh, transportation pathways out of that. Can you explain that in more detail?
Yes. So, let me flip back to that slide and bear with me one moment.
It's number three.
Number three. So you can see on the bottom of this exhibit, and I apologize, it's a little bit blurry, but you can see the peak time traffic counts of turning in and out. And so, those numbers you see are the intersections people would use, right? So not every single person that's trafficking through this development is going exclusively through that primary access, because there is the potential for those three access drops. So that's why those numbers seem a little bit smaller. But what our study contemplates is creating designated turn lanes in, and then a potential widening of Belt Line to be sure if you were going, I guess that's eastbound, that there's a concerted left-turn lane to turn into that development as well.
Any other questions?
Has this been shared with Eddie Bernice Johnson Elementary School? Because I know they're pretty, they're pretty, uh, fully populated already. With the possibility of them coming.
I'm all for growth. We need housing, but, um, uh, we don't need any more apartments. It's, I'm sorry, um, if you're talking about the, you know, building our homes, houses, and, um, uh, shopping area, shopping center, stuff like that. But, uh, but anyway, that's all I have to say.
Hi there. I'm Rich there with JPI as well. I just wanted to say one more thing. This property is zoned, so this is not a zoning case, this is not a zoning hearing. So this is more so of a decision on what developer you want to go with. You want to go with somebody who builds quality, or another guy that can come in, not ask for any variances, any government subsidies, not offer any, uh, money to go into a development agreement in order to do future impro-, improvements. So it's kind of, uh, you can have the three hundred units with the developer you know, the developer that you know is going to build the quality. I know we've toured the mayor and council member Ellen through our developments already. They know the quality that we build. So that's really kind of what this is. This isn't a zoning case, we're asking for more apartments. The apartment's already there, the apartments are coming. This is more so of a decision, do you want to go with a quality developer? Or do you want to have another developer that has built the same quality apartments that you guys already have that you're worried about? So I just wanted to say that.
So, to move forward, and Mr. Hall, I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
No problem.
Legally, or can we vote for a resolution of support on this if it's been denied?
Well.
I don't under-, I don't understand what was different from the last time, but anyway.
Still.
I, I will.
This is, you know, and that's a fair question. Nothing wrong with the question at all. But this is, as he said, this isn't a zoning issue. So thi- this is to whether or not they're going to be able to apply or get any objection from us regarding housing tax credits. So it doesn't really have anything to do with the zoning. I, I don't know, um, I don't remember how long ago it was. It was probably approaching the six-month mark anyway when we considered it. But, and also too, they could still work with the tax credits if whatever they've got zoned for now, that they can do and use the tax credits. And that seems to be what they're attempting to do, is the way that the property is zoned now. You correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I understood, is they're not asking for a rezoning. They're not trying to come back for any new zoning. They're saying, the zoning we have now, that's what we want to get the tax credits for. So that's what we're here to talk about. So if you want to ask questions, what is it zoned for now, what are you planning to do for it now, that's.
And a preliminary plat was approved, I believe, wasn't it?
I believe so.
Any other questions?
Yes, uh, Michael, could you give us a definitive definition of this letter of no objection that they're asking for?
So in essence, all the tax credits, when they do these things, any taxing entities, they, the, the TDHCA, I think that's.
That's correct.
Okay, good. I never know. I mean, it's, you throw in that correct, the PDQRYZ1. Um, they all like to have the input of the taxing units, taxing authorities, and think, and, and that nature. So what they want to do is, hey, look, if y'all are going to put this, what they're going to put up on the property, how does everyone else feel? You heard Councilmember Jacobs mention like the, uh, yeah. I'm not used to saying I need to speak louder, sorry. Um, you heard Councilmember Jacobs ask about the school. So that's what they're asking. Do you object to, um, and if you want to ask them, hey, so what do you want it the tax credits for? What are you putting up there? That's an appropriate question. So you can decide, hey, you know what, we want to object to that or not object to that. So you're not, but I'm using it for an easy example. Hey, we want to put little, uh, shacks up there where you have rubber bands to tie the doors down, and we want the tax credits to help us go, well, we're not going to approve that, obviously. That's the kind of thing what we're here to decide tonight, not the actual use of the property. Does that help? The, the tax credits are for them. Okay, maybe it will help. Tell them what the tax credit's for.
Absolutely.
You're getting to the question, Tony.
So, so the way these, when you think of the capital stack, right? When you think of, uh, you know, when you buy a home, right? You got to put a down payment, and then you got to take out a mortgage typically. And so, the way these tax credit developments work is you apply through the state, and again, there's several approvals you have to get. But then, you are awarded these tax credits, and you sell those tax credits to raise equity as a means of making basically your down payment on these properties. And so, simply what we're asking is, it's really just a question of, are we able to finance our property with this method? Right? It's, it's, it's really just a financing structure that enables us to build this kind and quality of housing.
So hopefully that helps some. So what they're basically saying is, this is how we want to use the property. The tax credits, everybody has to be okay with them, but the tax credits are going to help us fund this property. But we can't get those unless you and some other people say you're okay with it. This is what we're going to use the property for. Will you help us use and be okay, or be okay with us using these tax credits to do that? That is what they're asking. Are you okay with them getting these tax credits from TDHCA to help them finance the use of the property?
Yeah, and I, I think that's an important thing of note as well, is as you think about, how does tax credits work? That's basically federal dollars that are being injected to help the city build housing. And so, that's another way to think of it, is similarly to how grants work or things of that nature, it's just another way for us to raise equity that the City of Wilmer isn't having to pay a dime for.
And, and the feds are saying, hey, look, cities, if you're not okay, or the feds saying, hey, cities, if you guys and you girls, um, and I already thought, are not okay with this, then we are going to, uh, not let them have it. That, that's why they come to the cities for permission, to make sure y'all are okay with what they're putting in your city. Does that help?
I'll go back to my first question. Is it okay for us to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? If not, may I get a motion?
We need to have a club appearance.
I can have one more time, too. Basically, it's a good idea to vote for it if you support what they're doing on the property and not vote for it if you don't support what they're doing with the property.
But if a preliminary plat has already been approved by a previous council? No.
That, that doesn't, that's, and those are good questions, but they have zero impact on what they're doing with the property. This is not any way, shape, or form, our, our, can you all help us do what we know the property? That's not the question. The pro-, the question is, we already got a plan of what we're doing with the property. We're already moving forward with the plan. There are, there is some money out there that can help us go forward with this project. There are, there is some money out there that can help us go forward with this project. But y'all have to tell those, the state, you're okay with our project for us to get that money. Does that help?
Yep.
Once you, if it was approved and once you start building, when would be completion and citizens could move in?
Sure. So from the time we close on the development, we would have first units with people occupying them roughly eighteen months from then. And then we would have full completion, construction out of there, fully opened and operating apartment within twenty-four months. So basically, two years from the day we put a shovel in the ground, there's a fully functional, quality apartment there.
So y'all's question is, are y'all okay with telling the state and feds, hey, y'all give them their money, y'all give them your money to help them with this project, right? That's, that's the question that you got.
And so how does that impact the residents?
I mean, broadly speaking, it enables us to build the housing, the quality, and basically bring in our quality property management that we would utilize. So from that standpoint, there are quality and standards we have and are held to by the state for that matter, including background checks, which I know we've talked about before. There are criteria that is under the scrutiny of the state to say, are you running this property well? Is it meeting the standards and the kind of quality commensurate with this program?
I think what she asked was, would this cost the citizens anything, right? Is that what you said, Linda?
Well, I meant the residents of the complex.
Okay.
As far as are they receiving your tax credits?
So what they're receiving is the units at those income bands that we talked about in a previous session. So we would have residents earning up to seventy percent area median income. Let me see if I have that slide in here. But basically, household of four families earning seventy thousand plus dollars can go and live in this effectively rent that is controlled. It's not controlled rent in the sense that the government's saying, hey, you got to do this. But HUD determines guidelines on the rents that are charged, and so it remains continually affordable for the residents that live there. So they would be getting the benefit of those rents.
Any other questions? We don't have public.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to open up a public hearing for discussion of this.
A second.
Okay, go ahead. Would anyone like to speak?
Thank you. Mayor Protem, City Council. This is the second item that I wish to address on tonight's agenda. This is a gift that's being given to the city. It's providing this planned development and everything that they plan on doing is exactly what the city of Wilmer needs. It's a five-phase program. It's a five-phase, phase project. The first one are the apartments. What they're asking for. I pulled the, I pulled the mic right. Test, I don't know. I did a mic right. With this tax credit that they're asking for, gives them the ability to create a much more valuable, comfortable home for its residents. They're able to have the amenities that they can't find elsewhere in this city. They're able to get the protection in their homes that they can't find anywhere else in this city. They're able to get the access to amenities that they cannot find anywhere else in this city. This is what the tax credit that they're asking for will allow them to do. They'll be able to take the money that, because of the tax credit, they're able to build a much higher level home for folks to live in. But that's only part of the picture. The other part of the picture is, this is phase one. There's four more phases to this project that's being delayed by the lack of, the first phase being started. We want the higher level homes, phase two. The higher-end townhomes, phase three. Because this is a planned development. Within this same project, within this same area, they're going to have the multi-use phase that they're going to build, which includes additional retail. It includes restaurants. It includes office spaces for folks that have outgrown their home offices. People that have businesses in their home, they've outgrown their, their home. They need someplace else to be able to run and manage and operate their businesses. Phase four, phase five. People are going to need storage. Not a warehouse, storage units, which are going to go next to the property, next to co-parks, so that they can run their businesses out of. So that they can take seasonal items in storage units, not warehouses, phase five. So this is a much bigger picture that we're looking at tonight than just this one phase. The one phase allows them to generate the revenue, the income, so you put the infrastructure in place, the sewer, the water, electrical, put it in phase so that they can then tie into it to build the homes. They can tie into the infrastructure that this project will generate so that they can tie in with phase three. So that they have the infrastructure because of phase one to be able to do the multi-use phase as well. So this is a much bigger picture than just this one first initial phase. This one initial phase will help be the base to allow the other phases to be completed as well. So look at a much bigger picture, not at this one little project. And all they're asking for is the ability to get the tax credits to get this started and to provide this type of living for folks that without it, it would not be possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak? Come on in. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Latoya Cutie. I'm president of the Parks and Recreation Board. I just have two questions about the apartments. Will this be a low-income-based apartment complex?
So these will be financed with housing tax credits. So from that standpoint, they will be income and rent controlled as far as the income bands in which it serves. But from the standpoint that it's low quality, low class, that's far from the truth. And so what I can say is, it's a quality development, and it serves the residents and people of Wilmer. And so I don't think, what you can expect should our project move forward is that there's going to be a level, a standard of quality.
Okay, my second question is, will this count towards headcount for, it's three hundred units, right? Three hundred units added on to the city in Water Forest, City of Yonkers?
Yes, yes. I can answer that one.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? If not, I will close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Okay. Now, may I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve a letter of no objection for the Torrington Wilmer LLP apartment complex to be located on the East Beltline.
A second.
Thank you. Now, may I get a motion?
That's what I just did.
Okay, she just did it. May I get a second?
I did a second.
Okay. I need a vote.
Yes.
No.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Please speak up.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
It passes, three to two. Thank you, gentlemen.
Item number twelve, consider acceptance of the annual financial report, AFR audit, for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as prepared by Foxburton and Company, PC, the city of Wilmer's independent auditors.
Mayor, Member Protem, members of council, the city staff, and Foxburton and Company, PC, and advisors, have worked extremely hard to finally close the twenty-four audit. About a month late, Councilmember Nellen, but we did get it done. The purpose of the AFR is to provide the city council staff, citizens, and other interested parties with detailed information about the city's financial condition. After the AFR has been accepted by the city council, it will be placed on the city's website. A copy will be placed in the Wilmer Public Library, and it will be available for public inspection at City Hall. An original copy will be kept as a permanent record of the city in the city secretary's office. The purpose of this agenda item is to formally accept the annual financial report for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four by the city council. With that, I will turn this over to Frank Conroy, our auditor for the city of Wilmer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Frank Conroy. I was here right about a month ago delivering the report for the year end, September thirty, twenty twenty-three, and I'm happy to be back to wrap up and get you, get you finally caught up relative to your audits. We're delivering the September thirty, twenty twenty-four audit. I'm not going to spend as much time talking about some of the details and the financials similar to what I talked about when I was here last, but I would like to share with you what's new in this year's report. Essentially, if you were to look at the table of contents, you'll see pages seventy-six through eighty. We have the report on compliance of, of each major program and internal control over compliance with the Uniform Guidance. Uniform Guidance is essentially the standards under which the single audit is required to be applied relative to your spending of federal money. This is the first fiscal year since my tenure as the, since Foxburton Company's tenure as the auditor of the city, that you've eclipsed the threshold to be required to do a single audit. And so included in the, in the report this year is a schedule of expenditures and federal awards, which is on page seventy-nine. The threshold that's required to trigger single audit requirements is seven hundred fifty thousand or more expended during the fiscal year. You had your Green Ribbon Project, under which you spent million two fifty-six and change during fiscal year ended September thirty, twenty twenty-four. Generally speaking, there were no questioned costs relative to this program, which essentially means that in the expenditures that we tested and vouch back to invoices and everything, we did not find any discrepancies in what was spent relative to what the program requires or allows. We did have a finding relative to the system and internal controls. Essentially, what contributed to the timing on why we're doing this, when we're doing it, is the city staff needs to be capable of producing the schedule of expenditures and federal awards properly so that we can timely plan the audit and perform the procedures and deliver the report on a timely basis. I'm thankful to say we made it by the skin of our teeth. It had to be done by June thirtieth. We did this, and we completed it at date of June twenty-seventh. We were able to submit it to the data collection center for the federal audit clearinghouse, and we were able to get that all submitted timely. The effect of that would, had we not been able to do a timely range from something as inconsequential as not being able to be considered a low-risk audittee in your subsequent years. Low-risk audittee, audittee could mean that you don't have to do quite as much work. You can only qualify for that during the second and third year of a three-year cycle. This being the first year you did a single audit, it was moot. You had to be considered a, a non-low-risk audittee. That also becomes somewhat moot in the context of, you only had one federal program operating during the period. It's more relevant when you have lots of major and minor programs, and the single audit requirement essentially dictates that we have to test enough of the programs to test all the major programs. And if that does not exceed fifty percent of the funds spent, then we have to dip into the non-major programs until we get at least fifty percent of the dollars. As I said, it becomes somewhat to the point because you only had the one program. We had to test that one program for compliance, et cetera. So essentially, everything went fine relative to the single audit with the exception of the timing and having that schedule of expenditures available properly. Management has responded to our finding appropriately. Essentially, what they're saying, and long and short of it, is that they're not going to be late getting that ready for us for the fiscal year end of September thirty, twenty twenty-five. We've had discussions with management relative to the September thirty, twenty twenty-five audit. It's our plan to execute an engagement letter in the coming days, get that executed, and get an audit plan laid out, which we're required to communicate to those charged with governance, council. And essentially, what I'm expecting is that we'll, we'll issue that engagement letter shortly, get that executed well before the end of the fiscal year, communicate with management to get a schedule for planning and performing the audit. I'm hoping that we'll be able to start late October, early November. And by being able to do that, it's my expectation that we'd be able to complete the nine-thirty, twenty twenty-five audit, and hopefully by the end of January, maybe a little sooner even. But that's kind of the objective. The, the underlying target is to have it, have them all done by March thirty-first and a hundred and eighty days after your fiscal year end. Again, happy to say that we finally got to the point where you're caught up. We're not still working on one of your audits. Circling back around to cover on the audit, I'm happy to say we did deliver a clean opinion, as I mentioned to you the last time we were here. Essentially, a clean opinion means that there are no modifications to the report. There's no indication that the users of the financial statements would not be able to rely upon all or part of the audit report. We're also required to discuss with you certain things, like our compliance with our ethical requirements to remain independent. Myself and all of the staff that were involved in the engagement are compliant with those ethical standards. Were required to communicate with you, having difficulties with that, with managing, dealing with management in performing or completing the audit. Essentially, I've already covered that in mentioning the timing on the schedule of expenditure and federal awards. What really contributed to that was the historic turnover in personnel during the timeframe. But now that you've got competent staff in place that are informed of what's required, we're, we're much more confident that we're going to be able to get the information we need on a timely basis and be able to perform the audit promptly. I'm not aware of any incentives of what's referred to as opinion shopping. That's essentially where your, your management goes out and consults with other auditors in the context of the application of an accounting standard. If there's, if there's alternatives that could be applied, and they're going out and looking to find one that's most favorable for, for management. We're also required to communicate our understanding of the risks of material misstatement in the financial statement. By default, any recognition is, is required to be a risk of material misstatement in the financial statements unless it can be refuted. In addition to that, management override is potentially a risk of, that has to be addressed in the audit and planning process. I'm happy to say that we, we make the appropriate communications, and we design our audit procedures in a manner to ensure that if, if there is any such occurrences, hopefully it would be detected properly, promptly. properly, promptly. We're required to disclose to you what we believe to be the most significant estimates and the most significant disclosures in your financial statement. If you recall, when I was here the last month, I mentioned to you that I believe that would be your pension liability. It is both a significant estimate as well as a significant disclosure. The significance is obvious when you look at the number of pages of the report that covers the pension plan by itself, that kind of makes it clear it's the most significant estimate. To elaborate a little further, the financial statements are routinely embedded with estimates. For example, depreciation expense is an estimate, which is based on the estimated useful life of the property that's being depreciated. Uncollectible receivables is an estimate. You bill people for water utilities, you have other receivables out there that may or may not be collected, property taxes, for example. Historically, ninety-eight, ninety-seven percent of your property taxes are collected every year, so relatively small amounts that's out there as uncollected. You have the right to execute a lien on the property that collected eventually, so usually there's not much in the way of the risk of uncollectibles there. You have your pension liability, your other post-employment benefit liabilities, you've got your compensated absences, those are all estimates. Circling back around, as I've said before, I believe the most significant estimate in your financial statements is your pension liability. I drew your attention to that last time, I'll draw your attention to that again, it's on page fifty-three of the report, the most relevant piece of those many pages, and that is the impact on the estimated liability when your return increases or decreases based on the six-point-seven-five percent that is presumed. Your current pension liability, one-point-six million. If your return rate were to decline by one percent, that liability would go up to two-point-nine million.
May I ask you a question?
Certainly.
To interrupt, I'm sorry. But isn't that like almost every company, everybody out there is concerned, people are living longer?
Yes.
And so, I mean, that's very common in everything?
Yes.
Every, every city, every company, every...
Yes, and the good news is relatively speaking, even though you have a one-point-six-million-dollar liability out there, is you're reasonably well-funded.
That's what, thank you, that's what I wanted you to say. We're more than fifty percent of it, which is scary what most people have.
There is an exhibit in the, in the financial statements, I believe it's Exhibit B-two, but let me get to that real quick. I'm telling you wrong, it's B-five, I think. B-six, forgive me. The funding percentage did drop somewhat significantly compared to last year, but going back, you know, there's a ten-year history in Exhibit B-six, which is on page sixty-five. You go all the way back to twenty-fourteen, you were a hundred-and-fourteen percent funded, then one-hundred-and-three percent from ninety-nine, then a hundred-and-five, then ninety-six, then a hundred-and-three, a hundred-and-six, a hundred-and-twelve, ninety-six, and then twenty-twenty-four, unfortunately, it dropped down just a shot of eighty percent. Okay. And I can't really comment exactly on what contributes to that, but I would tell you it's probably the timing of the market performance. If you recall, we had a little bit of a significant downturn. I haven't yet looked for year-end December twenty-four, excuse me, but I would anticipate, without having seen those numbers yet, that this funding percentage, as well as your liability, is likely to decline because the market has performed again. But the big picture from standpoint of council's responsibility is just be aware of that and take that into consideration in your budgeting process when you consider what you're funding towards your contribution. That's essentially the only piece that you really can control when it comes to your liability. You can't necessarily control how long your employees are going to live, you can't necessarily control when they're going to retire, you can control what you pay them, which is a, which is a variable that goes into the calculation as well, but you can't control the return, and you can't control what you contribute towards the pension liability, so... Pardon me. Does that cover your question? Okay. So I think essentially that's, that's the gist of what I wanted to discuss relative to this September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four audit. Look forward to working with you again on September twenty-fives audit. I am optimistic that we're going to be able to keep you up to date going forward, which I'm very enthusiastic about, because I didn't sleep well knowing we were behind for so long, so... Any questions for me?
Counsel? Any questions? Thank you, sir.
My pleasure. Thank you again for having us.
Yes, sir. Mayor get a motion.
I make the motion to approve.
Mayor get a second.
Hold a second.
Please state your vote.
Yes.
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 Speak up, please.
Yes.
So they can hear you out there.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. It is five to zero. It passes.
Mayor, Parta is moving to the next item. I would just like to clarify on the consent agenda that Member Tim made a motion to approve, and it was seconded by Councilmember Jacobs. I just want to make sure.
Oh.
What?
For the consent agenda?
Oh, okay, okay.
Is that correct?
Okay. Thank you. Okay, uh... May we take at least a ten-minute break? Everyone, we're going to take a ten-minute break, and we'll be right back.
Good evening. I'll go through the April presentation first, and then we'll go into May. I broke it down by month, so it's a little bit easier to differentiate what happened from month to month. If you open up your printout, we'll go over the general fund revenues, and we didn't have a lot of activity in the property tax revenue line, because we have collected all of them already, which is a great, it's great news for the city. So the year-to-date in property taxes are about seven-point-four million dollars, and then the sales taxes came in at three-point-three million year-to-date. So the total revenues for the month of April were a little over one million dollars. And for the year-to-date, as of April thirtieth, it was thirteen-point-eight million dollars in revenue for the city. The next page of the presentation shows you just a pie chart, which will give you the percentages that make up the total of that thirteen-point-eight million dollars. Mostly, the revenues come from taxes. Next page is for general fund expenditures, and it's broken down by different segments. The first one is general government, and listed there are all of the departments that make up the general government. And as of April thirtieth, expenditures there were a little over a hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars. And you go to public safety, and it was five-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-two-sixty-one. Community services, spent twenty-seven-thousand-six-thirty-three. Community development, a hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-oh-thirty-seven, and non-departmental was twenty-nine-thousand-nine-twenty. The total expenditures for April were nine-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. So the revenues were over the expenditures by seventy-seven-thousand-one-ninety-one. Year-to-date, two-point-three-five million dollars of revenues were collected over expenditures. So that is good news. The next page shows a pie chart of those expenditures, and I made a note there, that the public safety totals there for the year include the cost of equipment, which is a fire engine, and then another big piece of equipment that they bought with, that's being financed with debt, so you will see it in there. The next page will show you just a synopsis of the revenue and expenditures as of April thirtieth, and again, two-point-four million dollars was collected in revenues over the expenditures. So that is a good positive ending to April for the general fund. For the Water and Sewer Fund, we see total income in April of three-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. Year-to-date, two-point-two million dollars was collected in the Water and Sewer Fund. The Water and Sewer Fund expenses for April were two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-oh-thirty-nine, and year-to-date, they have expensed two-point-one million dollars. The Water and Sewer Fund is looking pretty good at a hundred-and-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-twelve dollars. That is income over expenses, so that was a positive outcome for April. The majority of the expenses are water and sewer costs, utilities, that are from the city of Dallas. The next page, you will see also the synopsis there, that'll just show you how the income exceeded expenses in April, and also for year-to-date, by a hundred-and-eight-thousand-three-twelve. Next, we'll go into the Wilmer Economic Development Corporation. For the EDC, revenues exceeded expenditures by a hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-six-hundred. Their income comes from sales tax revenue and some interest income, so two-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars for April was collected for EDC, and the expenditures were just above fifty-one-thousand dollars. See some pie charts there as well. The EDC has a favorable, favorable ending to the month of April. Next will be the Wilmer Community Development Corporation. The CDC, for the month of April, revenues exceeded expenditures by one-point-one million dollars. This represents text dot green ribbon reimbursement for that project. You see the revenues, one-point-two-four million in April, and their expenditures were ninety-four-thousand-seven-sixty-seven.
Patricia, they didn't get the green presentation, they have the... So they were looking for the pie charts.
But that's okay. Oh, I do have a question. Sales tax revenue should be at like seventy-five percent, we're only at fifty-four percent. Is the state behind sending us or giving us some tax?
They're not behind, but the way that's, it's kind of strange the way the sales tax works, but the collections are behind because of the way that the taxpayers pay. So it's not really behind, but we are.
It's two months.
Yes, so next fiscal year around October, we'll still be receiving sales tax money for this fiscal year, which we accrue. You'll see that later on, I'll accrue all of that money into this fiscal year, so you'll see, you know, the true collections.
But even in the past, we've been, our sales tax is lower than what it has been?
Well, actually, that's a good point, yes. I have been tracking the sales taxes, and we are trending lower. These past couple of months, sales taxes have been going down. Now, for the month of July, I did see it went up again. So hopefully, it'll go up, you know, as the school season starts to pick up and all other things get, you know, sold. But I am anticipating sales tax revenues decreasing for the next fiscal year. So yes, it is going to go down. We have to be prepared for that. So it's two factors there, they're two months behind in paying us, which is fine, because I'm accruing all of that, and it's going to be okay at the end of the year. However, when I come back and present the amended budget to you all in a month or so, you will see that I am going to adjust those sales tax revenues in the budget to more closely align to what we're actually collecting. But yes, there's, there's a downward trend. That's something we have to prepare for. Every city is experiencing this, by the way. Oh, so you didn't get this one?
No.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. I'll go to the next page, but I, I'm certainly, what I will do is, after tonight, we can put it on the website, the financials, and the presentation as well, so that, you know, the public can see it and you all can see it. And what we're trying to do under the city administrator's direction is, I am instituting a lot more transparency for all of the financials, I put all the check registers on there, and I'm going to continue to do that every month. We have the audit out there, and now that this one was accepted, we'll put that one up there, all the budget stuff will be there, all the financials will be there, so that the whole point is to be very transparent with everyone, so that not only the citizens and the staff and the council, but other outside agencies can look and see how we're being progressive with, with the city. And I'm excited also, I don't know if Rona has mentioned, but when we transition to a new software that we're working with right now to get it, no more QuickBooks.
And if I may, you are a consultant, you're not a full-time employee?
That's right, yes, I'm a consultant.
So you could leave at any point? Do you have a contract to sign in as a consultant?
I will be here as long...
Because, you know, our previous auditor said we had a knowledgeable person, and so I wanted to keep a knowledgeable person in.
And he asked me that, like, are you staying here for a while? I am here as long as you all want me to be here. I am retired. I do this fun. I want to help you guys, okay? And so that's why when Rona contacted my consulting firm, and I was available, I was at Highland Park before here, by the way. And I had just finished with them, and they contacted me and said, you know, we have a little town, Rona Strinko, and I said, I remember her, tell me about them. So anyways, I'm here, and this is all I do. So you can have me here for as long as you want me to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will do everything, and I was telling Rona, I want you guys to be known for like, wow, look at that little town! They have everything on the website and their software, and so I've done software migrations before, I've done, you know, created special funds for cities, won awards for them with the budget, wait till you see this new budget. This is going to be really nice. And we're going to submit it for an award, we're going to submit our next audit for an award, that's all of the things that I have planned in my mind, that I have talked to Rona about, I'm just so excited that I can be here to help you all. It is my pleasure, by the way, my pleasure, so anything that you want me to do different or, you know...
No, we want you to stay the same.
I'm sorry?
I want you to stay the same.
My, my more colorful, whatever. But yes, I will put this on there so you can see it. I wish we had a TV and all that, because I'm used to doing the presentation, you know, on the, on the big screen and people can see it, but I'll put it on there. So, you know, to continue with the CDC, and that's a good point, I'm glad that you pointed out, so we have to, we'll discuss all of that when it comes to budget time and the sales taxes and how... The good thing is that I'm calculating good property tax revenues for you guys for next year, so it'll even out. So for the CDC, I think I left off on the expenditures, yes, so we did the Green Ribbon, Green Ribbon Grant, and I have to say, I'm very impressed with the city administrator and how she has engaged the services of very knowledgeable people who know how to administer this grant, this text dot grant from the Green Ribbon. It's very complicated, and in other cities, we've had staff doing it, it takes a long time to get through all of that, and these people, they are quick. Whenever I ask them for something that, I need this, I need that, here you go. Hey, I need this for the audit, I need to get it by today, here it is. So it's fantastic, I like... So it's fantastic. I, I, I like that, working with them. Um, is it half in associates? Yeah, half in it. Her, I think her name is Kristy. So she's, she's really good. Um, so the CDC has, um, over one point one million dollars in revenue as of April, and that's because we got the money back from Tech dot, um, to pay for, um, those expenses. So ended up in a positive note for April. Um, May looks pretty good as well. I'm not gonna go through everything, because I know that you have questions about it and you wanna have some more time.
Well, we, we just got it handed to us.
Sure, yeah, I, I understand.
We need time to review it, is what I was getting at.
Of course, yes. And, um, I'll just go through some, just generalized. And, um, and so for the month of May, the total revenue in the general fund was just right around seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, year to date, fourteen point six million dollars for the general fund. About ninety-seven percent of the budgeted, um, revenues in all. Then, uh, for the general fund expenditures, the total expenditures for May were about one point one million dollars. And we did come in under the revenues by about three hundred and ninety thousand for the month. However, the year to date is still positive. It's one point nine million dollars. And that just has to do on the timing of, you know, when the revenues come in, and then we're still spending on some other stuff. So that's the general fund. Water, sewer. Total income for May, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. The total expenses for May, three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And we ended up positive, um, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two fifty-five. I do want to point out that, as I discussed with, um, Ms. Stringfellow, the water sewer fund is kind of shaky. It's, it doesn't have a, a lot of cash to... And, and I guess that's a, something we'll have to talk about in the future, about how to, um, you might have to have a rate increase or something, because it's, it's not sustainable. So Wilmer EDC, um, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven forty-five in revenue. Expenditures, only about twenty-four thousand. Um, so two hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven sixty-five is what, um, they ended up as, you know, revenue over expense. I don't like to say profit, because it's not really a profit, but if it was a business, that would be your profit. Wilmer CDC, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, three eighty in May was collected, and the expenditures were three hundred and three thousand, six fifty-two. And they ended up with a hundred and fifty-nine, seven twenty-eight in net profit. So that is my presentation. If you have any questions, I will certainly upload these to the website so you can have, um, access to it, to see that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number fifteen, consider resolution, adopt the policies and procedures for the library.
Mayor, Mayor Per Tiam, members of council. The library policies document provides guidance on the governance, operation, and use of the public library. The current version was reviewed and updated to reflect best practices, recent procedural changes, and community expectations. Key sections include policies on library use, behavior, circulation, internet and computer access, fines and fees, meeting rooms, and collection development. The updated version also includes clearer language and formatting for easier reference. Adoption of these updated policies will support day-to-day operations and ensure consistent service delivery. Staff will implement the changes immediately upon approval and provide training as needed. The policy will also be published online and made available at all library service desks for transparency and accessibility. Staff recommends approval of the revised library policies as presented. These updates ensure compliance with state standards, address current operational needs, and promote a welcoming, safe, and equitable environment for all patrons and staff. This was reviewed, um, by the library board, and they recommended approval. Uh, the chair would have wanted to be here this evening, um, but she was unable to be here. The vice chair was not able to be here either, and so, um, we're happy to take any questions, but it was recommended, um, approval, um, to the council by the library board. We happen to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions?
I do. You know, in order to get a library card, there has to be two, uh, proofs of ID. So a driver's license is not sufficient anymore. They have to have that plus something else. And we've never done that in the past. It's always just been show your driver's license, and you're able to get a library card. So what, what's the reason for having...
Which is why we would have wanted the chair to be here tonight to, uh, better explain what their rationale was. Um, but that is best practices. Uh, the company that works for the city works in Thomas Grant, um, Red Oak, and now in Dakenville, and they, um, you know, they believe that that's a way, um, for proof. Um, if you all will recall, um, we discussed this some time back. I think the council desired to make library services available for both in the city and outside of the city. And when you are loaning out a library book, um, it's an asset of the city. And sometimes, not saying that that's always the case, but sometimes we don't get our asset back. And, um, it's a way of being able to, if, should something happen, that we, we might have additional information collected.
The reason that I bring it, I just see something hap, you know, somebody causing a scene. What do you mean? I've gotta go home and now look for a water bill. I don't know if I threw that away or whatever, you know, like your bill. So, um, and then I know the police chief can testify to this. We had an issue with, um, someone who's not a citizen wandering the town a couple of months ago. Spent a lot of time in our library. Do we have any security for that building when people are just wandering, because the homeless and just going around? What?
It is a public building, and, um, if you see other libraries, as long as they're not causing any problems, um, it is a warm place in the winter and a cool place in the summer. And, um, our librarian is very, uh, good at identifying someone that may be, um, social help. And, um, there are quite a few teenagers that have nowhere to go, and they can come there and, and make sure that they have something to eat. And so it, while it, you know, it's a library.
So they can come to the library without having an ID or something? It's only if they wanna use the computer or check out a book?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I can find out, um, and provide that information as to what the rationale was.
But you said that's common practice in other cities?
It is, but I, I want you all to know what that discussion was.
It hasn't been in Wilmer.
Are there any other questions? If there's no more questions, may I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, policies for the library.
May I get a second?
A second.
Please vote.
Yes.
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 Five to zero. It is passed. Thank you. Sixteen.
Item number sixteen, discuss and consider a recommendation to the city council for a preliminary plat, DFW two addition, located partially in the city of Wilmer and partially in the city of Wilmer ETJ, consisting of one lot on approximately fifty-five point three four nine total acres. The subject property is situated in AK Gray Abstract Number five oh five and the DW Wright Abstract Number one five three one. The portion of the subject property that is located in the city of Wilmer is generally addressed as four twenty-three hundred and one forty-two West Beltline Road and two hundred and two fifty Mason Road. City of Wilmer, Dallas County, Texas. The portion of the subject property located in the city of Wilmer ETJ is generally addressed as two hundred Mason Road. City of Wilmer ETJ, Dallas, Tex, Dallas County, Texas. BP dash two five dash zero six.
Good evening. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of Beltline Road and Mason Road and is addressed as four two zero, three hundred, and one four two West Beltline Road and two hundred and two hundred fifty Mason Road. The northern portion of this property is located within Wilmer's city limits, which is approximately twenty-four point nine seven two acres. The southern portion is located within Wilmer ETJ and is approximately twenty-eight point seven nine one acres. The total acreage of this property is fifty-four point three four nine acres. To the north of the subject property, there are existing residents zoned as single-family residential, along with a planned development that permits light industrial uses. To the east, the properties are zoned, single-family residential, and commercial restricted. To the west and south of the subject property lies City of Wilmer ETJ. The purpose of this plat is to create one lot record from flatted and unflatted tracks of land and to dedicate a variable width right-of-way along Mason Road. During the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on June twenty-sixth, a question arose regarding the business personal property taxes associated with this property, which is designated for the future development of a data center. Specifically, there were uncertainties about whether these taxes would be allocated to the city of Wilmer or to Dallas County, given that the proposed data center will be situated between the city limits of Wilmer and its extraterritorial jurisdiction. Staff did contact Dallas County Appraisal District and were told that such could not be determined until construction was completed. Staff has reviewed the plat, and it meets all technical requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval. The plat was also recommended for approval at the June twenty-sixth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Counsel.
So there is no determination about the tax, um, revenue as far as how it would be distributed between the city and the county yet?
No, ma'am. Uh, I spoke to several people, and that was the, the answer that I got.
Well, if, are they replating it as one lot, is what I understand? We're still at sixteen, aren't we?
And what will that address be?
The address, um, will probably be determined, um, later on. Uh, right now, since it's just in the plat stage, it, the address has not been, uh, updated.
So if the section that's in Wilmer ETJ, or if they're gonna put it all in one... I'm, I'm, I'm confused. If it's all one border and one plat, it either has to be all in the county or all in the city, right?
It cannot, even if it's one plat? Even if it's one plat, we, we can plat it, because remember, we have subdivision authority in the ETJ. And so, um, staff works with, um, the county to address through their nine-one-one system. And, um, unless they voluntarily annex, then that's the only way that it would be in the city.
Well, that's what I think the, the property owner is not wanting to annex in.
So the applicant is here. She's, she's there. I was going to ask that, maybe she can address what their future plans are.
Please.
Yes. Hi, I'm Megan Thomas with QTS Data Centers. Um, the intent is to volunteer, voluntarily annex this property once we get through the plat approval. Um, we will start that process with city staff. We will go through the process of voluntarily annexing that twenty-eight acres into the city of Wilmer.
Okay, that makes a little more sense. Because the other had me way off yonder, and I had a bunch of questions, but this I understand.
So is this the property that they've already broken ground?
No, ma'am. It's across the street.
It's on the corner where the trees are and then Mason Road.
You know where the...
It's where they tore up all the concrete.
Yeah, the roads tore.
Yes, at Mason Road.
Okay.
Not on the right.
I thought it was the one that was already in process, right across the street from that, all the building going on there.
No, ma'am, not that one.
How far down is it?
How far down is what?
This property.
Down the road?
Uh-huh.
Oh, it's at Beltline and Mason.
It's right there at the corner.
It's right at the corner, across the street from...
Okay, so you're talking...
...that are being developed.
So it's gonna be on the north side of Beltline?
It'll be on the east side of Mason, not...
Oh, it's gonna be on the south side.
So, it's where they had the torn concrete of, you know, they tore that road up. You know, the little shortcut we used to take to go to Mason? Instead of going to the curb and turning left, you know, that little straight edge?
That, that won't be there anymore.
The same side of the road I'm on, just down a couple of...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Three.
So Ms. Stringfellow, in previous developments... In previous developments, have the property owners come into the city before they begin, or does it really matter?
It, it just depends on what they're trying to do. If they have an...
Yeah, it is. It's near you.
Typically driven by whoever owns the property.
We just accept a promise that they will come in?
Um, I don't think we control that part. Um, this company has, um, is very active in this community, and, um, they meet with staff weekly to walk through, um, how their project is developing. And so they, they've kept their word, um, with everything. And there, there is an active development agreement on the portion, um, that is further to the west. And if certain, um, so it's a combination of this company, the Venusland Community District, and, um...
Are they a part of the standard above these?
Yes. So they are all working in conjunction to, uh, bring water and sewer to the area. And, um, they have the same engineer. Um, they have worked with the city to make sure that the city, um, connects to TRA. Um, and so they're putting critical infrastructure into TRA.
Oh, good, okay.
So what, just, I have a question. What will be the occupancy?
What?
The occupancy of the building once it's constructed and you...
Once it opens.
Yes, that's a great question. We are in the very preliminary stages of design, so I don't have those numbers.
Okay. Guess she wouldn't have. Not at this time.
Know what they're gonna do in there?
It's, it's a data center.
It's a data center.
It's a data center, so it, it will have, uh, servers, um, that... But whether it's...
How many are they gonna put in?
Their servers, or if they lease it out to other companies. I, I think that's what you're saying.
You don't know what they're talking about. Yeah.
But it is one of the top five data centers.
Okay, okay, ladies. Do you have any questions?
Have y'all done any studies on the data centers?
Yes, ma'am. That was all done during, um, the due diligence process.
And that's what y'all are planning on putting in there?
Yes.
Wow, okay, okay. I live two doors down, thank you.
Okay, now, y'all aren't right up at, at Beltline, right?
No.
There's a company gonna be up there, I believe?
The, our property is at Beltline, um, but our development will not be right at that road.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
How big of a square footage of, it's gonna be two separate buildings, you said?
For this specific property, it's just going to be one.
Just one, and what's...
Just one. And what's the potential square footage?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. We are very, very preliminary in this design.
Up in Richardson, they're building some, and they're making smaller ones. And they're putting frontages that look like houses, or like actual porch and front doors and things to make them like they would fit. Since there are some houses in that neighborhood, you know, that might be something to consider for the frontage along Beltline, to make it look more like a residential than a warehouse building.
Councilwoman, if you recall, when the zoning came in, this was actually commercial zoning. And their representative came and said that they would do a commercial front with landscaping. So, if you drove by, you would think it's a retail site.
Right.
And that was part of what you all said as part of the zoning, was that they wanted to make sure that it blended with the neighborhood.
Right.
Okay. So, it will-
And that is still the case.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it's not just gonna be a concrete blank wall facing Beltline?
No.
Okay.
I apologize, but I did not clearly hear the answer. Is it just one building?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have one. Isn't there something out there now that it had... They can't have these data centers within so many, a thousand feet, or something, kind of pollution, and all they put off?
Data.
That study, air study and all this stuff.
That's just the warehouses.
But-
The data centers that's further away.
Okay. I'm listening, and I'm trying to talk, so.
You're-
But they- being farther away from the residential area is what I'm getting at.
Yes. We are following the correct setbacks, and all that. We are doing studies for all of the CFD modeling and noise studies and all of that.
Thank you. Anything else, ma'am?
Can I address one of the issues?
No. He wanted to talk. No. Okay, counsel. Thank you, ma'am, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel. Who would like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to accept the preliminary plat for item number sixteen.
Okay. May I get a second?
My second.
Thank you. May I get a vote?
Yes.
No.
No. No.
Yes.
It's denied. It's three to two.
So, I need to just, if I may, Mayor?
Please.
Okay. Plating is one of the... I don't know if y'all remember the conversation that we had a while back. Plating is the one area that-
Oh, this is the first, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
If someone, Mayor, wants to make a motion to reconsider, that would be great.
Would we like to reconsider?
Uh, yes, I am. Yes, I will.
Okay.
You know, I always said it was twisting my arm to get me to do this, but I will. Okay, we'll start all over again.
May I get a motion? I've got the motion. May I get the vote?
Yes.
Phyllis?
Yes.
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 It is five to zero. It passes.
Mayor, could I ask for just a five-minute recess? Would that be okay?
Yes, sir.
That's the one that is plating thing, which-
Right.
That you can get suited over if you don't vote for, if you don't vote yes.
It is nine thirty-one. There's gonna be a five-minute recess.
Item number seventeen, discuss and consider a recommendation to the city council for a final replat, Dasson's One Hundred Edition, located in the city of Wilmer ETJ, consisting of two lots on approximately forty point three nine one total acres. The subject property is situated in the Major W. Spencer Survey Abstract Number 1287. City of Wilmer ETJ, Dallas County, Texas, and generally addressed as 303 Mason Road. R. Two five zero one.
The subject property is located along the southwest corner of the Beltline Road and Mason Road intersection, and is addressed as 303 Mason Road. The property lies completely within Wilmer's ETJ. The total acreage of this property is forty point nine three one acres. To the north, our property is zoned light industrial. To the east, there is a mix of single-family residential, commercial restricted, and a planned development that allows for a townhome district. To the south of the property lies Wilmer ETJ, and to the west is light industrial zoning. The purpose of this plat is to divide an existing lot into two lots. This item meets all technical requirements of the subdivision ordinance, and staff recommends approval. This item is also recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission on June twelfth.
Where would the division line be?
It will be on Lot Three. Lot Three will be divided.
I mean, how do I- on this map? Where would the division line be? 'Cause I- I'll be honest with you, I'm dyslexic, and sometimes we can work these ideas.
It doesn't show it on the aerial, but it does give it on the other page where it shows the actual plat. It should show the line there.
Okay. Can you explain that to me, please? Which one?
I can help. It's Lot Three R, and then Lot Five R, Block A. So, it's dividing the original Lot Three, Block A, which is that big one, this big one here.
And then, okay, what's Block Four?
That was an existing lot, but that was a part of this plat, was it?
No, ma'am.
They're not the same shape.
Is this property-
It's a different plat.
I'm looking at this, and the way this looks, they don't match. They're not the same shape.
So, that aerial is the whole property, but it's not showing you that aerial where the division is happening. The division is happening, I believe, at the lower south portion. So, I only took a zoomed-in version of that plat.
Okay. This property, it's on West Beltline Road, and Sunrise?
And Mace, I'm sorry.
It's just right across the street from what we just approved.
I thought- I thought there was already construction going on there.
There is. It's- it is.
They're moving dirt. They've already done some stuff.
They're building. I hear that banging all day long.
Okay, so she's involved in this one, too. Explain it to us, please.
So, the previous large lot that the aerial is showing, I haven't seen the aerial, but the aerial is showing, that was previously recorded. What we're doing now is just separating from where we've got... Oh, I can see it here. We're just separating out. We previously had four lots, and now we're just separating one of the lots, that large Lot Three that has the line down the middle, separating it into two separate lots. And those are just gonna be two separate buildings on those different lots.
Okay. I understand you're gonna have two separate buildings.
Yes.
The one that is coming off of Beltline, not Beltline and Mason?
Yes.
Okay. There's construction going on there, right?
Yes. That's on the northern half of the property, not where the subdivision is happening. So, that part of the plat has already been recorded. We're just amending that southern portion of the plat. I wish I had, like, a screen and marker that I could just doodle on to show you guys.
Okay. Well-
That one that they're building, and that is a data center's going up now.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a data center.
Yes.
So, you're gonna take part of the property and divide it?
Yes, that southern part, that property on that aerial.
I don't know what else we can do with you, ma'am.
Well, so you're just gonna take a certain portion of that and build another building, right?
So, yes, the previous plat that was recorded has four lots. It has a lot for the-
Right.
Building, building, large, oh, sorry, the large lot of land, and then our switch station, our substation, where our power will be fed to the buildings. So, that lot that you guys see being split with that square in the corner, that is just being split in half for the additional building.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is West Beltline and Mason.
Yes.
And it goes over... It- I'm seeing that whole section as one.
Oh, on this? Sorry, this.
On what I'm looking at here.
Yeah. Is that the aerial? So, I know-
I don't know what this is.
Ma'am, if you can add the zoning map, if you'll go back a page to the aerial? Yes.
Separate. Okay.
This is Beltline, and then this is where the split was. And so, from where that top area, that top corner of Mason Road, across is what we're talking about. So, that line is going across here, and then this is that little square-
Right.
That you see on here, and then this is split in between that one.
Okay, so-
So, it's just the bottom part of that original Dasson's.
Is this the first time this has come to the city?
No. So, the original plat was Dasson's, and so, it was that big piece initially when it was in the ETJ, and then they split it in the middle, and now they're splitting it again from that second piece. They're splitting that second piece.
The reason I'm saying that there is some things that's already been started building there.
Yes.
So, we're approving a preliminary plat after something's already started construction?
This is an amendment to the- for final plat. The- we've- this plat has already, the original plat has already been recorded with Dallas County.
Oh, okay. This is a final replat.
Final replat.
Yes, yeah.
So, you're breaking this one property really up into three, or into three sections, 'cause Lot Four, Block A.
Yes.
And then-
It- the- from the original plat, the original plat-
So, we took them all and made them one.
And then we separated.
And now we're splitting them. If that's what I'm following.
So, we originally consolidated, and then we separated out. And so, there's currently four lots of land. We're separating with that additional separation into five lots.
Into five lots?
Yes, on the total lot.
Division line, does this division line match up with the curve at Beltline by chance?
No. I don't believe- I don't believe it does exactly.
Further to the north or south?
I think it's more south.
More south?
Yes.
Does it match up right with that building? Because-
It's a little bit more north of that. Like, approximately, so sorry, approximately right here-ish, not to scale, but approximately right there.
Okay.
Show me where she marked it, baby. Please. Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you. No, it's in the ETJ. Okay, now, now I understand what you're wanting to do, but-
Wait, wait. I need to ask her a question, if you don't mind. May I please answer her question?
Is this in Hartley?
Um- This piece of property, or these two pieces of property, it started out, they were gonna be townhomes, you know? So, and then gone from that to, and now-
For this piece of property?
Uh, these, they're on Beltline Road. That's still the ones we're on.
That was the previous one. That is going to be the town home.
The townhomes was what was here and here, where the cornfield used to be. That right there was going to be-
That's a vacant lot over there.
Yes, yes, right.
It's set up for sale sign only.
Yes. That's where the townhomes were, and right now, there's nothing supposedly coming in there.
Right.
This over here, this was the Shafer's property.
Well, yeah, but then this is, is this Mike Rader's property?
No.
It's not Mike Rader's property?
No, no, no.
Okay, okay. 'Cause that's where that's where, 'cause he was gonna, going to, and then I don't know.
No, no, no. That's- he has nothing to do with it.
Okay, that, okay, okay. Shafer's, okay. Mike Rader, I'm getting-
Yeah, Mike Rader has nothing to do with it.
Okay, yes, yes. I got that for you. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay. Now, what are y'all wanting to do here?
Just separate the-
Just separate.
Yes, ma'am.
You haven't decided what you're gonna do with that piece of land?
It will be another building, but I thought we were asking in terms of the plot. But yes, there will be another building on that plot.
So, that north part of the property will be pretty huge?
Yeah.
The whole area? Yes.
Yes, because of the data center that's going in.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Is that gonna, is the data center going to take up all of the rest of that property?
There will be four buildings on the property, and then we're gonna have landscaping and setbacks from those lot lines.
What's the green space gonna look like?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
So, that's in the county ETJ. The city doesn't have any authority on the building permit to go from Dallas County.
Oh, okay. So, what are we, what are we doing?
You are deciding the plat. So, the city has subdivision authority, and so, they are just asking to separate that Lot Three into two lots.
Okay.
But that's, I understand it's not, it's in the ETJ? But that's the major thoroughfare to the entrance of our city.
No, that, that-
That's Beltline, coming right at the curve. That they'll see, that's going to be the first thing that you see.
Yes, ma'am. So, we currently have, in our local agreement with Dallas County, and we work closely with their development staff. And although nobody has zoning authority in incorporated or ETJ areas, we do work closely. They, I believe, they want to make sure that it looks nice, and that it has a good drive-up appeal, whether it's in Wilmer or not. And so, they've been working with us in Dallas County, too, but we have no zoning authority.
They don't meet, have to meet our requirements for signage and trees and all kinds of things.
Yeah, but they have submitted concept plans as to what it's gonna look like.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
You gotta be nice.
I always ask.
If there's no more questions, may... What do I do with my paper? There it is.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to accept the final replat for 303 Mason Road.
Okay. Thank you. May I get a second?
My second.
Okay, Linda spoke first.
Go ahead.
Okay. Now, may I get a vote?
Yes.
Ms. Phyllis?
No. Or is this, this is-
Ms. Turner?
Or is this one the plat?
It's a plat.
Okay.
And it's in the county.
No.
Yes.
Two twelve.
Yes.
Okay, it is three to two. It passes. Thank you. Nineteen, please. I mean eighteen. I'm sorry.
Discuss and consider a recommendation to the city council for a preliminary plat, Stream DFW C1, located in the city of Wilmer, consisting of one lot on approximately eighty point zero five one acres. The subject property is situated in the James Chapman Survey Abstract Number 379. City of Wilmer, Dallas County, Texas, generally addressed as 501, 409, and 401 West Beltline Road. and four oh one West Beltline Road and six oh one East Beltline Road, P P dash two five dash zero five.
The subject property is located at the northeast corner of Sunrise Road and Beltline Road and is addressed as five oh one, four oh nine and four oh one West Beltline Road and six oh one East Beltline Road. Property is located within Wilmer city limits. Subject property is owned by light industrial and is a total of eighty point zero five one acres. To the north and east of the property, there is a mix of light industrial zoning, single-family residential zoning and areas without zoning. To the south, the property is adjacent to light industrial zoning and ETJ property. To the west, the property borders the city limits of Lancaster. Purpose of this preliminary plat is to create a single lot of record from unflatted tracks of land for the dedication of easements and utilities along the development of the data center and encore substations. The site will include an approximate two hundred and twelve thousand square foot substation maintained by Encore Electric as well as a separate approximate three hundred and fifty-nine thousand square foot substation managed by the developer. The plat indicates that there is a private detention pond located on the southeast side of the property and a temporary sediment basin for drainage situated on the north side. Additionally, the plat outlines three driveways along Sunrise Road, one for exit, one for entry and one specifically for the substations. This item meets all technical requirements of the subdivision ordinance and staff recommends approval. This item was also recommended for approval by the planning and zoning commission on June 12th.
Council D.
To put another substation in?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. For the trees that are along Beltline and then also to the east of the property, is there any plans by the developer to cut those trees at this time? To, to leave that as kind of like a boundary because we've got homes that close into that area, close by, that might.
The applicant is here would be able to answer that.
Sir?
Yes, all the trees along Beltline and along the creek that goes on, uh, north on our east side, those trees will be, will remain.
Along the road?
Along Beltline.
Along Beltline on the road. So that's why all your openings are gonna go to Sunrise?
Correct. And we're coordinating with the city of Lancaster now with those driveway permits.
Could you state your name and address?
Will Gladback, ten twenty-three Oak Meadow, DeSoto, Texas, seven five one one five.
Thank you, sir.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, you just said something with Lancaster for the roads. I thought the east side of Sunrise was, so is all of Sunrise Lancaster?
Um, the portion from Beltline up to a little past Green Road is Wilmer. I'm sorry, is Lancaster. And then from Green Road up to Pleasant Run is Wilmer.
Yeah.
Then why did we help pay for that?
I believe Dallas County was.
Involved in that.
And we've been talking about straightening Sunrise on the other end, so that's really not, not even us?
So we were given credit since we were doing the project together with Lancaster.
So it's really Lancaster's responsibility?
Lancaster goes, they go all the way to that easternmost property line.
I didn't wanna know that. I thought that was ours.
I thought Sunrise is half ours and halfway.
That's what I thought. I thought it went down the middle.
No, it's the bottom half is Lancaster and top half is.
About eighty percent of what we do serves seniors and individuals with disabilities, right? So that'd be accessing the senior center, medical appointments, grocery shopping. So we wanna make sure that resident of Wilmer has access to jobs, medical, uh, appointments and then grocery shopping. So we'd make sure that, uh, any grocery store that's in Lancaster would be included in the travel zone, so. Um, the portion, uh, for the city as far as contribution, uh, is around thirty-seven thousand dollars. We would go get federal and state grant to, to help subsidize this program. Grant funds cover about seventy-five percent of the, of the cost of this program. Any questions?
So what you're saying is the city would pay thirty se, thirty-seven thousand?
That's correct, for the first year. And that, that'd be funded through EDC, CDC.
Yeah, CDC. So it's always been funded through him. And so the program cost would, the difference between the fifteen thousand that's paid now
Right.
and then I believe it's whatever the difference is between the thirty-seven, so like fifteen, seventeen thousand
Yeah.
and some change.
Okay.
Um, to continue the program. But there, uh, we are proposing that amount. We've taken it before the, um, both boards, uh, when you all had quems. Um, and so, um, we're just asking for the, um, uh, approval of the interlocal agreement to continue with Star Transit versus the inland port transportation management. Any other questions? If not, may I get a motion? Thank you, sir.
May I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
What happens if we don't get this federal grant? Will you come back to the city and tell us we need to increase our cost or pay?
So the federal funding, great question. Uh, federal funding that, that we receive is formula funds from FTA and, and Texas. So those are not grant funds that we have to apply for every year. They're, um, automatically awarded to us because we're the designated rural transit district in the area. So it's not competitive grant funding. It doesn't hinge on, you know, what, what happens and when.
The program is cutting a lot of grants.
Right, right. So, uh, nothing transit related has been, has been cut. Um, I, I'll say that now. When you talk about electric vehicles and some of those things, those are the programs that are being, being hit right now from the transit standpoint.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
May I get a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve an interlocal agreement with Star Transit for public transportations for the citizens of Wilmer.
Thank you. May I get a second? Thank you, sir. May I get a vote? Yes.
Ma'am?
Yes.
I believe. She wants to ask another question.
I do have another question. Uh, you said this was based on the ridership of three hundred and twenty-five rides a lot?
That's, that's current ridership.
That's, um, is the thirty-seven five based on the equipment that you use to provide for those rides? And so if the ridership increases, would we, how, how is that determined?
So, it's an annual agreement, right? And so we'll work with the city, you know, what, what we do for all of our local partners, on a monthly basis, you'll receive a ridership report that'll give you detail of, uh, of activity that's, that's going on in the city. Um, each year, we go to all of our local partners and say, here's the contract for next year, here's what ridership is. Do we need to, to go up or down just to make sure that we're meeting demand of, um, of the service? And so, uh.
So that's an annual estimate?
Right, right. You know, and, and, and so what we're doing right now, the, why we've structured the agreement the way it is, is because there is an existing base of ridership, right? And so we wanna make sure that we continue that. But we also make, wanna make sure that we grow the program if needed, right? If there's demand to get people to grocery shopping, doctor's appointments, that we wanna make sure that we're providing that and not having to deny any trips. So, yeah, that's, and that's something that we do with all of our cities. There are some that say, we don't want any budget increase at all, keep it at this rate and we'll keep on moving. There's some that wanna, uh, grow the program and, and we do that too. Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
May I get a vote?
Yes.
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 Okay, it is five to zero. It passes. Okay, they're going to executive session.
In accordance with Texas Government Code, Chapter five five one, Subchapter D, the city council will now reset into executive session closed meetings to discuss the following. A, pursuant to Section five five one point zero seven one, one of the Texas Government Code to seek legal advice from the city attorney and receive an update regarding all pending or contemplated litigation involving the city of Wilmer, including but not limited to cause number two three dash one zero eight eight one, Hamilton versus City of Wilmer, Texas, USDC number three two two, CB two one zero three, on appeal in the Fifth District Court of Appeals from the one, one ninety-second Judicial District Court of Dallas County, Texas, Dallas County, Texas. B, pursuant to Subsection five five one point zero seven one, one of the Texas Government Code to seek legal advice from the city attorney concerning, concerning pending or contemplated litigation regarding the case styled, cause number DC dash two two zero one, three seven three two, Ed Road RV Park LLC versus City of Wilmer, Texas, and Mayor Sheila Pettah in her official capacity on appeal in the Fifth District Court of Appeals from the one ninety-second Judicial District Court of Dallas County, Texas, Dallas County, Texas. C, pursuant to Section five five one point zero seven one, two of the Texas Government Code to seek legal advice from the attorney concerning the possible adoption of an ordinance repealing in their entirety, ordinance number two zero two two dash one two zero one E through two zero two two dash one two zero one Z H and ordinance number two zero two three dash zero one one nine E through two zero two three dash zero one one nine, Z C two nine, which adjusted the boundaries of the city limits of the city of Wilmer to include certain properties inside of its corporate limits pursuant to Subsec, pursuant to Section four one point zero zero three of the Texas Local Government Code and adopted by a city council for the city of Tex, city of Wilmer, Texas, on or about December first, twenty twenty-two and January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. D, pursuant to Section five five one point zero seven one of the Texas Government Code, the city council will consult with legal counsel regarding contemplated litigation related to the bond validation lawsuit. E, pursuant to Section five five one point zero seven four, A, one of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment of duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee to wit city administrator.
I am closing the council meeting at ten twenty-four. We will be going into executive session.
The city council will reconvene into regular session pursuant to the provisions of Chapter five five one, Subchapter D, Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code to take any action necessary regarding, A, pursuant to Texas five five one point zero seven one, one of the Texas Government Code to seek legal advice from the city attorney and receive an update regarding all pending or contemplated litigation involving the city of Wilmer, including but not limited to cause number two three dash one zero eight eight one, Hamilton versus City of Wilmer, Texas, USDC number three two two, CB twenty-one oh three, on appeal in the Fifth District Court of Appeals from the one ninety-second Judicial District Court of Dallas County, Texas, Dallas County, Texas.
May I get a motion?
Mayor, there's no action.
No action.
No action? Okay. Okay, B? Is that no action?
Mayor, there's no action for, for any of the items on the executive session.
Even for the final one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We are adjourned at eleven twenty-nine.